Great, we will call to order the Tuesday, June 9th special meeting of Sanitary District 2. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. It never gets easier over Zoom. All right, Rebecca, the roll call, please.
Okay. Board member Casissa.
Here.
Board member Lee.
Here.
Board member Ravazio.
Here.
Board Vice President Kuhnhart.
Here.
Board President Beckman.
Here. Thank you, Rebecca. Our first business item is closed session, so we will start by taking public comment on the closed session item, which is a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. I do not see any attendees for public comment. Rebecca, is there any email public comment?
Let me briefly check the public comments email. And I've received no public comment for the closed session item.
Okay, then we are good to adjourn to closed session. So I believe we're going to leave this Zoom meeting, open up our closed session Zoom meeting, and we will come back to this one afterwards.
There's Teresa if you want to.
Oh, hey, Teresa.
That's correct. Teresa, we took public comment and there was no public comment for closed session. And we will adjourn to closed session. The council members.
You're muted, by the way, Teresa.
The council members will leave. I will join you shortly. I'm just going to quickly share the following PDF.
All right, away we go. All right, hit leave here.
Thank you. Okay, is everybody accounted for on this one? Okay, no, I was just seeing if everybody is accounted for on this one. I am not seeing RJ. Okay. I guess I will mute myself on this one, just to make sure everything is going okay. But I'll be here if you run into any problems, and I'm just going to check and make sure that the PDF I shared on the other meeting looks good. Okay, Teresa is in. Is anybody else going to need to share anything with the group that I think I have it set up so that anyone can share, but... Do you, does anyone expect to share a screen or a presentation or anything? Okay. Okay, I have restarted the recording.
Okay, we are back. We're reconvening into open session. There is no reportable action from our closed session. With that, it is time for, open time for public comment. Any members of the public who want to comment on an item not on the agenda may do so. They have three minutes. I do not see any attendees in our meeting to comment right now. Rebecca, is there any email comment?
There is no email, there's no email comment that pertains to the Sanitary District Board.
Okay, great. Then seeing no public comment, we are going to close open time and move on. There are no presentations, which brings us to our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have already been discussed and do not require further discussion. Would any members of the board like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, would any members of the public like to pull a consent calendar item? I still see no attendees. So seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. I believe at this point, we can take a motion on the consent calendar.
Moved to pass it entirely.
Excellent. Rebecca, vote, please.
Board member Casissa.
Yeah.
Board member Lee.
Yes.
Board member Ravazio.
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Board President Beckman.
Yes, consent calendar passes. There are no public hearings. That brings us to our business items. We have one business item, 7A, which is to authorize the district manager to approve the plans and contract documents and authorize an advertisement for bids and award a contract for construction to the lowest responsible bidder for three, an amount not to exceed $3.1 million plus an additional 10% contingency. The project is the 2020 sewer rehabilitation project number 18201. Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So this is the 2020 sewer rehab project. This consists of streets in Marina Village, Flying Cloud, and Pacific Queen, and Mariner Cove, as well as some repairs on Madera Del Presidio and Meadow Ridge Court. This is a project that is included in some commitments made to the Regional Water Quality Control Board several years ago as part of our operating order, as part of the JPA with CMSA and other collection agencies. This project will occur over the summer, and as part of this request, we're asking for permission for director award, as this is a very long-duration project, likely to go into January under, it's probably about a seven-month project. And so that will allow a few weeks of additional time in the summer, better weather period, as opposed to later in the winter where we're subject to more impacts via weather and groundwater. This is a very important project, as it also connects to our overall plans with the town as far as roads that are in need of pavement rehabilitation. And so, as we've discussed before, we're trying to address all the undergrounds, infrastructure, not just our agency in that Sanitary District 2, but also communicating with other water and PGN and other utilities to make sure they get their work done prior, so that when we do come forward to pave the street, we minimize our chances of disturbing it or having to cut it and excavate, you know, in the near future shortly following the paving of the road. And yeah, it's a, it's a very important project, and we look forward to improving our infrastructure to reduce also infiltration and inflow into our sewer mains, which, you know, really benefit the environment and overall collection system.
Thank you, RJ. Are there any questions from the board? Yeah, Charles?
Is 10% contingency standard for sewer rehab and just in general those type of civil projects?
10% is standard. Typically, often, if this were a small, smaller size underground project, I would actually recommend 15. But given the scale of it, I think 10% is manageable.
Right, only because a lot, most of the bidding I've seen in the last couple of years has gone upwards of almost 20. It's just, you know, but I know the bidding environment softened a little bit, so it just kind of.
Oh, and maybe I need to clarify yet. So the 10% contingency that I'm requesting is for, after we receive bids, having a 10% contingency set aside for construction, whereas I believe the law.
So if it comes within 10% of the estimated price, then you'll still be able to accept the bid, is that?
I believe it's actually closer to 15, so I think we're requesting a not-to-exceed bid amount, I believe it's 3.1 million, whereas the estimate is 2.7, so that's closer to 15% contingency for the authorization to bid, to award the project. And then separately, we would ask that you allow a 10% construction contingency once we receive bids to handle unforeseen conditions and things of that, of that type.
Thank you.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you, RJ. Are there any other questions from the board members? If not, we will take questions from the public. Any members of the public who have questions about this item can put their hands up via Zoom, or they can email their public comments to publiccomment@tcmail.org. I am not seeing any members of the public with their hands up.
Actually, President Beckman, can I let the public know really quickly, since we have people filing in with the expected start time of the town council meeting at 6:30, that we are just wrapping up the last item of the Sanitary District Number 2 Board of Directors' agenda? And if that seems confusing, that's what's going on at the moment. But it does not appear that we have any questions for this board of the Sanitary District item, and I have not received any emailed public comments about this item.
Thank you, Rebecca. If I may, Teresa?
Yes, this is, again, we are calling for a public comment, not public questions, public comments.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay, I do not see any members of the public wishing to comment, so we will go ahead and close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for council comments or a potential motion. Board comments or a potential motion. Do any board members have comments? Bob?
Well, I was just going to move to authorize the district manager to approve the plans and contract documents and award a construction contract to the lowest bidder not to exceed 3.1 million plus a 10% contingency for the 2020 sewer rehab project.
Second.
This is Fred. I'll second that.
All righty, thanks. Rebecca, vote, please.
Board member Casissa.
Yes.
Board member Lee.
Yes.
Board member Ravazio.
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Board President Beckman.
Yes. Motion passes. That takes care of our business items. Item 8 is district manager and board member reports. RJ, do you have a report?
No report today. Things are moving along, and we'll be seeing a lot of construction on the roads in County Corbada. Looking forward to it.
Awesome, thanks. Board members, any reports? All right, in that case, we're going to adjourn the meeting of SD2. And we're about to convene the meeting of the town council, so I'm going to flip through my binder here. All right, council members, are we all ready? All right. We're going to go ahead. It is now, what time is it? It is exactly 6:30. We're going to call to order the special meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council for June 9th. Rebecca, can we have a roll call, please?
Council member Casissa.
Here.
Council member Lee.
Here.
Council member Ravazio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you. We're going to skip the salute to the flag, as we just did that as part of the SD2 meeting that we just concluded. I'd now ask everybody to join me in a moment of silence to honor George Floyd and others who have been wrongly killed in similar circumstances. Thank you, everybody. With that, we're going to move on to open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda to go ahead and do so. Members of the public will have three minutes each. And if you would like to speak, if you'd like to give public comment, please go ahead and put your hand up via Zoom, or you can email your public comments to publiccomment@tcmail.org. So we're going to give the members of the public second now to go ahead and raise their hands on Zoom if they wish to, or send us an email.
Mayor Beckman, I did receive two public comments via email, but I'll hold them till the end of the verbal public comment in case either of the two commenters are present tonight and wish to speak in person.
Okay, sounds good. And our first public comment is going to come from Carol Svenson, who's got her hand up. I'm just going to get my stopwatch ready here. So we've got three minutes. All righty, Carol, I'm going to allow you to talk here.
I just want to be sure. So is this meeting about the expansion of hotel square footage for area coverage? Is that the subject of this meeting? Is this the special meeting, or no?
That is coming up on this agenda.
Okay, so the public comment would not be about that right now, then? That would be later.
You'll get an opportunity coming up.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Rebecca, maybe if you want to go ahead and read the two emailed public comments, will we give other people a chance to raise their hand if they're so inclined?
The first email is from Lauren Brown, who says, hello, Corder Madera City Council. My name is Lauren Brown, and I was born and raised in Marin. I attended Basich, Kent, and Redwood High School. I also went to massage school in Marin and completed my final year of college at Dominican University. I love Marin and I'm so grateful for my upbringing. I wanted to come to the meeting this evening to gain the support of the council to rename Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Sir Francis Drake was a known slave trader and benefited from the institution of slavery. I believe that honoring his name with the main road that cuts across Marin should be no longer. It is not just to glorify his legacy, and when you honor someone whose values represent the oppression of another culture, because you are then making a bold statement that you agree with their values as well. I believe Marin can do better. I've taken it upon myself to start a petition, support the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, which in less than a day has over 650 signatures. Thank you so much for your time and energy. Let's stand in solidarity and together rename Sir Francis Drake Boulevard to something more inclusive. Warmly, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren.
And the second comment received for tonight's meeting was from Veronica Wilson, who says, hello, I have the following public comment for tonight's meeting. I would like to request a name change for Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Drake was a known slave trader. Honoring his legacy via a main Marin road signals a reverence for this past and does not uphold what many believe are the values of this community, inclusion and anti-racism. The names we give our public spaces matter, and as a resident of this county, I would like to take action in making sure our public roads reflect a society committed to equality and justice. Thank you very much for your time and energy to include this comment and consider subsequent action. Best, Veronica, Little Valley resident.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Veronica. I do not see any other public comment at this time, so we're going to go ahead. Oh, David Mahler's got his hand up here.
He actually just sent an email, but if he's on the meeting, I'll, we'll let him speak instead.
Okay, what, David Mahler, you're referring to? Okay, great.
He also just sent an email.
Perfect, okay, we will get him on here right now. Hi, David.
Hi, Council. Actually, I would rather have the email read. I only raised my hand because I was worried that the mail hadn't gotten in there, so.
Sure thing.
If you wouldn't mind reading it, I think that might be more.
I have my email open to my right, and I just saw it pop up. Let me open.
And David, I'm going to go ahead and, and put you back on mute while Rebecca reads. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mahler's email says, dear Corder Madera Town Council members, thank you for your statement from the Corder Madera Town Council and invitation to participate in upcoming public discussions posted today on the town's website. It represents a good first step in what will be a long and challenging process of change. I have nothing but high regard for the Central Marin Police Authority, CMPA, and at the same time, in light of what we're learning from the murder of George Floyd and numerous other recent examples of police brutality toward people of color, it seems vital to review CMPA's mission, policies, and procedures from the perspective of, what can we learn and how can we do better? I was heartened to read in your statement that a special police council meeting is being scheduled later this month, at which the council will take public comment, have a public discussion, and consider formation of a special task force to evaluate our police practices and provide a report and recommendations to the police council. In addition to this planned public comment and discussion process, I'd like to request that the town council direct its two representatives on the police council to advocate for the police council to commission an evaluation by an independent third party to identify where CMPA's mission, policies, and procedures, as well as its funding and budgeting, can more closely align with best practices from a progressive community service perspective. The planned public comment and discussion process can help provide input and guidance to the third-party evaluation. Additionally, such third-party evaluations should include outreach to and input from people of color in our community and beyond who might otherwise participate, who might not otherwise participate in a public process. Once opportunities for improvement are identified and reviewed and refined through a public process, they should be implemented. I am making the same request to all three JPA entities. Sincerely, David Mahler, Larkspur.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, David. David, I'll just let you know that your hand is still up. Reading your email took two minutes of your three minutes, so if you want to speak for another minute, you can. I see Veronica Wilson's hand is also up. Her email did not take three minutes either, so I'm going to allow her to talk real fast and see if she has anything she wants to add. Hi, Veronica.
Hi, council members. Thank you all so much for taking the time tonight, and thank you, Rebecca, for reading my public comment. I really appreciate it. Like Lauren, I am a Marin resident from birth. I was born here and recently moved back, actually about six months ago. And as a resident, you know, I take a ton of pride in living here. But I do feel like it is our responsibility as a community to have places that are named with people or figures or flora and fauna, things that truly represent our values and our inclusiveness. Lauren, in her email, had referenced a petition that we have going. I wanted to provide an update that after 24 hours, we're at nearly 1,500 signatures from other residents in the county and folks who support the renaming of Sir Francis Drake. I think that the message it sends to our fellow residents is not one that represents the values we have as a community. I think furthermore, in the current moment that we find ourselves, there's actually a really unique opportunity to reimagine the way that we name our streets and monuments and the way in which we signal what it is that's important to us as a community. So I really appreciate you all taking the time to listen. And then finally, I'm just wondering what potential next steps there might be if we can garner any support from members of this council. If any one of you could follow up with us offline about some.
Thank you so much. Veronica, that's going to be your three minutes there, but I want you and Lauren and David to all know that I do plan on calling up with you individually after this meeting.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll take Veronica off here. Michaela Ravazio has her hand up, so we're going to go ahead and recognize Michaela. Hi, Michaela.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for being here and for bringing me on. I'm also calling in to support the Black Lives Matter movement and how important it is that we, as a town, specifically address this. I was disappointed to see that this is not on the agenda. I appreciate the moment of silence at the start, but I think we collectively, as a town, need to be doing a lot more in this field. I appreciate the call to change the name of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard as a small motion. I would like to express solidarity with that. I would like to see more outreach to people of color in our community, specifically for feedback around any type of public process that we're going through to amend the police department. And I would also like to express support for an independent third party to assess our police department, whatever prior comment was discussing that. And yeah, I just hope that this conversation can be something that we're actively choosing and participating in and bringing forth and not pretending like it isn't happening right now. This is a huge global movement that is way overdue, and as a town council, even though we're on a local level, it's really important that we stay current with the times and address this and go head-on into it, because it is a huge issue in our county and amongst our people, and the racial disparity and privilege gap really, really needs to be addressed head-on, and we really need to do a better job of bringing diversity into our public spaces and voices. So I will, I know I've been emailing you, and I appreciate the dialogue, and I appreciate how you're showing up, and I want to encourage you to really keep going, and it's really important. So, thank you.
Thanks so much, Michaela. We also have a hand up here from Lauren. This may be the same Lauren whose email we heard, and if so, I think she's got about a minute left. I think reading her email took about two.
Beautiful.
Hi, Lauren.
Hi, thank you so much for taking the time to hear me out. I just wanted to say hello, everyone, and just kind of be on your radar. Yes, my name is Lauren Brown, and I was born and raised in Marin County. I went to Basich, Kent, and Redwood, even massage school, and then graduated from Dominican, so I've been around. I love Marin so much, and I just really feel like now is the time to make a really important change in renaming Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. I've connected with a couple people who say that Drake is also proposing a rename and get rid of their mascot, so yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that the ball is in motion, and we'd love your support from a city council level. We got support from the mayor of Larkspur last night in terms of some helpful next steps to contact District 2 and District 3 supervisors. So just any help in terms of what next steps could be. I know Sir Francis Drake doesn't run directly through Corder Madera, I believe, but still, it's in Marin, and you all probably live there, so it would just be wonderful if a council member wanted to help us in this project right now.
Thank you. Lauren, that's going to be your three minutes, unfortunately, but thank you, and I will be following up with you personally after this meeting, so keep an eye out for that.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to go ahead and take you off there. We'll see. There are no other members of the public with their hands up right now. Rebecca, is there any email public comment?
There is no additional emailed public comment received, but I did want to point out, since I do see someone calling in on a phone, that I believe the instructions for virtually raising your hand when calling in from a phone is to press star nine. If I have that correct, this is our first meeting through the Zoom platform, so please bear with us as we, we learn all of these intricacies, but I just wanted to make that announcement, and no more public comment as far as I can see.
Okay, great, thank you. I am not seeing any further public comment on my end either here, so with that, we're going to go ahead and close open time for public comments. That brings us to presentations, of which there are none, and that brings us to item four, which is our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Would any members of the council like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, we will turn it over to the public. Would any members of the public like to comment on or pull a consent calendar item? If so, please raise your hand through Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Not seeing any hands go up here. So we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. With that, I suppose, and we are ready for a motion on the consent calendar. Yeah, Bob?
Move to approve items 4A through 4F.
Second.
Great, thank you. Rebecca, vote, please.
Council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Lee.
Yes.
Council member Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. All right, the consent calendar passes. That brings us to item five, which is our public hearings. Our first public hearing is 5A, which is a public hearing to consider the adoption of Resolution 222020, approving an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and to an introduction and first reading of a zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 18.12 Commercial Districts and 18.13 Mixed-Use Districts to permit hotels as a conditional use in the C4 zoning district and increase the permitted floor area ratio and height for hotel uses in C3, C4, and mixed zoning districts. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is, Mayor and council members. Hi, this is Adam Wolf, planning and building director. I am going to now try to, hopefully you can all hear me pretty well, but I'm going to try to share my screen.
It's a little dim. I'm sorry.
Oh, shoot. This morning it was working well.
Well, I'm going to turn my own volume up just to try to compensate.
So Adam, sometimes it toggles between the camera speaker and then the computer speaker, so.
Yeah.
Where it says mute.
It's a built-in camera and speaker out of the camera, so that's what we have from our microphones here. Are you still able to hear me or not?
Yeah, yeah, that's better.
Okay, I'll just speak a little louder and closer to the, to the microphone. I'm going to share my screen. I have a presentation for you this evening. Let's see. So hopefully this works here. Okay, well, I think Mayor Beckman provided a good introduction for what we're here. Okay, well, I think Mayor Beckman provided a good introduction for what we're here tonight to discuss. This is the an item before you, which you are, should be familiar with. And I'll skip to this slide. Given the lengthy sort of discussion and review process that we've had to date on the hotel floor area bonus ordinance, and before that was sort of a policy discussion regarding changing the land use regulations for hotel uses in Corder Madera. That was really a discussion that kicked off in February of 2018. The staff received direction to move forward and try to propose an ordinance amendment that would incentivize or grant additional FAR floor area for hotel uses in town, provided that it met sort of the higher standards that the town sought for such uses. And so this just lists, and this is all again in your staff report, some of the background, all the links were in your staff report. There's been a lot of meetings. Attachment three includes a bunch of prior staff reports and some background. But I think the origin of this, for those who haven't been around for the beginning of this process, was it taking a look at our sort of the existing FAR floor area ratio for hotel uses at .34, which just means it's 34% of the lot area could be built in floor area in a building proposed for hotel use. And that was very low compared to other jurisdictions in Marin, and just low when you look at what hotel market and hotel developers really need in order to build a modern hotel today. So several meetings, July 24th and November 13th, were with the Planning Commission and developing a framework. Planning staff and the Planning Commission worked really closely together on the framework for the the draft zoning ordinance amendment. And on April 9th, we went to the Planning Commission. Actually, the Planning Commission did approve at that time a resolution recommending adoption of the ordinance. Since that time, and prior to going to the town council, we did receive public comment regarding our environmental review for the ordinance. And at that time, over the last summer, essentially, we decided to come back to the council on August 20th of last year and have a discussion with the town council, not only regarding sort of the general policy direction we were headed, but also seek direction regarding how to, whether to prepare additional environmental analysis. And at that time, we decided to do so. And so you can see really for the good part of the last year, that's what we've been doing as staff, is getting that environmental document, which is again in your staff report and and obviously available to the public and has been since. Well, anyways, that's what we've been doing since the good part of the last year. So I will just mention, with respect to the environmental review, we did publish on April 25th a, what is called an initial study mitigated negative declaration, which is environmental determination. And it went out for public review and comment for 30 days. That ended on May 25th. And then on May 26th, we had the Planning Commission meeting, where Planning Commission recommended to the town council to, they recommended unanimously to approve the initial study mitigated negative declaration and to adopt the ordinance, which is now before you as ordinance number 95, sorry, 995. We'll get into this a little bit later. There were a couple of comments that I want to address and how we address those comments in terms of the comments that were, came in through environmental, the environmental document. So I'll get to that in a second. Just in terms of an overview, and much of this should be relatively familiar. I will say, we also checked in in January with the town council on this, just to provide an update of where we were in our environmental analysis. So, but in general, and this may be, there may be new people from the public on the call, so I do think it's important to go through this. In general, what this ordinance does is, number one, it permits hotels in the C4 zoning district as a conditional use. Currently, hotels are not allowed in that zoning district, and that's really the area between San Clemente Drive and Paradise Drive on the east side of Highway 101, the Bayside. Secondly, it permits in the C3, C4, and MX zoning districts on sites greater than one acre in area, it permits additional FAR or permits the bonus. Applicants would be required to hold a community meeting and a preliminary hearing at a planning commission prior to submitting an application. So this is really embedded into the ordinance that there would be this early consultation with the public. And not only just a preliminary hearing with the planning commission, which we've had for other large projects, but also even before that, a community meeting sponsored by the applicant to try to really get that early feedback in the process from members of the public. There would be enhanced findings required that the planning commission would be required to make. These are related to design and aesthetics, environmental sustainability, community integration, and enhancements to the public realm, and I'll get into that in a little bit. But that's sort of the meat of what, sort of what we call enhanced findings, and sort of lay out the expectations for what hotel development should achieve in Corder Madera under this bonus. Again, the bonus would be up to .70 FAR. You can see, and then the scoring system within the ordinance was developed to aid not only the applicant, well, not only the planning commission and town decision-makers, but also the applicant in planning forward and sort of meeting those findings and sort of lays out a roadmap for how to get an approved project. And then this was something we, staff has looked at more recently over the last year, and in looking at additional density, we also think it's important to look at additional height. So there is a provision in the ordinance as proposed that would allow up to 47 feet in building height. Again, that was really to achieve design, the flexibility needed to, in staff's view, to design a hotel project that meets all of these different enhanced findings. So there may be a need to preserve portions of a project site, incorporate community amenities into the building itself, all of which are not directly, may not be directly related to the hotel project itself. And so that height allows for additional flexibility. And then we also looked actually at where the bonus would be allowed in town, and there's several other buildings that are approximately that height or slightly lower, mostly between 40 and 47 feet or 48 feet. This just shows the area where that first bullet, and I don't know, can you see a cursor on the screen when you see the presentation? Okay, you can. So this is the C4 area that I mentioned, where the hotels, the hotels would be permitted by a conditional use permit. These are the actual bonus locations. The C3 district is in brown. The C4 district is in this purple color, and the MX district is in this sort of greenish color as well. So that's where the only areas where, that we're talking about this evening, related to the hotel bonus ordinance. We've, I've had some questions from members of the public just about whether it would affect residential areas in town, and it does not. Some of the conditions are that, again, it needs to be on a one-acre site minimum lot size. So we're talking about larger lot sizes in town. And then another provision that we've added since last August, and this relates, I'll explain in a minute why, but we cap the amount of bonuses that could be granted pursuant to this ordinance. So a total of four hotel bonuses could be granted in Corder Madera under this ordinance, and no more than two bonuses could be granted in each bonus, hotel bonus area. So that, those two provisions were in there for a couple of reasons. One, the total amount of hotels that could be granted bonuses at four, capping that at four, caps the total amount of development that actually could occur under this hotel ordinance, bonus ordinance. And therefore, it also was important, from an environmental review perspective, to be able to analyze something a little bit more concrete. And so that's what we did. And I also think it was, well, you know, I think it didn't affect really the outcome and sort of the potential, ultimately, what the purpose of the ordinance was, which was to attract new hotel development. And I said this at the planning commission, but, you know, I think we'd be in good shape with two or three hotels over the next 20 to 30 years, frankly, if we're, if we're able to attract that. We're in good shape, so I'm very comfortable with the four cap, four bonuses granted cap. And then the no more than two bonuses each was more of an anti clustering provision that we included so that we wouldn't get a hotel row, which is raised in some prior council meetings as somewhat of a concern. And just to go into that, this is a map that just shows the, at least at this point in time, the lots that would be, are more than one acre in size. And so you can, and I'll go through this pretty quickly, and here are the hotel bonus areas. So again, those are the zoning districts that I mentioned before, just shown a little bit differently. And again, no more than two in each of these areas, no more than two bonuses could be granted in each of these areas. Other conditions were just similar to what we've seen before. The hotels would be required to meet residential flood zone standards so that any habitable room would have to be located above the base flood elevation plus the freeboard, which in Corder Madera is now 11 feet NABV. And again, I mentioned the community meeting, so those are other, those are other conditions in the ordinance. The findings, this is something I believe we discussed back in August of last year, but there is this four enhanced findings. I'm not going to go through each of them. I'm happy to answer questions about them. But I have them on slides, if you want to go back to them. Again, related to designing aesthetics, environmental sustainability, community integration in public realm. And really, what you see is, as we get to the amount of bonus that can be attributed to each of these findings, is that they're weighted more heavily towards the architecture and design and the environmental sustainability components of a project. This is the FAR assignment schedule, which is within the ordinance as well. Again, this is all trying to help guide applicants, but also the evaluation of a project by the planning commission in terms of whether it meets the findings, whether it meets these enhanced findings, and how much bonus really should be granted for certain components of a project that are included in a proposal, put up a proposal. So design and aesthetics, as you might imagine, is the most discretionary piece of this. There are certain design principles that are laid out. There's the environmental sustainability component. Again, happy to answer questions about this. Community integration, we've outlined ways in which this finding could be met in the amount of points or floor area, how much floor area could be granted by including this type of amenity within the project or as part of the project. And similarly, with public realm improvements, whether the project improves pedestrian streetscape or bicycle improvements. And we've provided examples, and again, how much floor area can be attributed to those proposed improvements as part of the project. So we, this should not be titled next steps. We've done, we've completed these steps, but it's important to note. So these are the two real items before you this evening. The town has completed an initial study mitigated negative declaration. We have, we consulted and contracted with Placeworks, an environmental planning firm that is in the Bay Area. And we, if you have questions about that, we have Principal Planner Steve Nowak on the call with us this evening for questions regarding that. We did identify potential significant impacts to air quality, biology, greenhouse gas, and noise mitigation. I'm sorry, and noise. And mitigation measures were proposed in the initial study mitigating negative declaration. And those are embodied or in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, the MMRP, which I believe is attachment seven to your staff report. As I mentioned, we did receive two public comments, one from the Marin Audubon Society and one from Friends of Corder Madera Creek Watershed. And in response to those comment letters, that's in attachment eight of your staff report, we, not only did we provide a short, relatively short memo by our, from our consultant, Placeworks, from Steve Nowak, but we also, more recently, and this was sent to you yesterday as part of a revised resolution, actually, sorry, as part of a revised ordinance, we noted that we did revise ordinance 995 to add a condition regarding bird strikes in that in order to approve a project, the project would need to incorporate one of five, I believe it's five different ways in which a project could be developed. Some of those have to deal with the type of glass, the reputation that is used on the project in the upper stories. There are several different things that could be done, and at least one of those would have to be done. That was actually taken straight directly from our environmental document, which in the document, it considered those as recommendations, but we've sort of codified that. And then finding one B in the ordinance in both commercial and mixed-use districts, we've clarified that really, when we talk about exhibiting natural systems, we are talking not only, but we wanted to spell out that we're also talking about existing ponds and wetlands that may be on a project site when we're talking about that. And that was something that we thought we should include, just to clarify the intent, and that was clearly the intent. Obviously, some of this is derived from our experience with the Corder Madera and hotel project back, I guess it's, you know, several years ago. And then, let's see. So with that, I mean, there's really three options before you this evening. We have a resolution related to the initial study mitigated negative declaration. That's Resolution 22, draft Resolution 22/2020. And then we are, as the planning commission did recommend, that the council conduct its first reading of ordinance number 995. And obviously, there are other options as well before you this evening that are outlined in the staff report. That's all I have for my staff report at this time, and I'm happy to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Adam. That was a great presentation, very thorough. We'll take questions from the council. David?
Adam, one of the things called out in the comments from public was a body that I was not familiar with and looked it up. The Barcelona Continental was called Pool. It was also been called the Black Kettle. And on, as far as I can tell from Google Earth, it's kind of a drainage way behind the back parking lot of Big Five and near an office building near Lucky Drive. That's very small and narrow, and I just, I just wanted to know whether that is considered a wetland? There was a lot of back and forth with respect to the quote-unquote pond next to the Best Western that I'm aware of, but I'm never aware of this one being a wetland. Is it so designated?
Well, you know, I don't know if we've received actually an official determination. I can tell you that the property owner, when they did propose a, there was actually a proposal only maybe a couple of years ago to redevelop that property as a memory care facility. And at that time, their consultant recommended not to- And at that time, their consultant recommended not to they did, they did acknowledge some environmental value there, whether or not there was specifically analysis done to call it a wetland for some other resource. I don't frankly recall that they got that detailed, but they, in any case, avoided it entirely in their proposal and development was left to sort of the existing location on that Barcelino property where that exists today. So I would imagine, I mean, my own opinion on this would, without having seen any biologists go in and do research there would be that there are portions, at least portions of that that might be, that would be called a wetland or have sensitive natural resources as they're called, similar to what we found at the quarter of the area.
Are there specific findings that we need to make not to go ahead with any project, but are there specific findings that we need to make in order to accept this initial study and mitigated negative declaration? If you could point the way to those, please.
Yes, absolutely. And let me pull up, those are in your attachment. They are, they're in the resolution. Twenty-two slash 2020. So that's attachment one to your staff report.
Okay. So page four. Findings, page four.
Yes, correct. I think, sorry, I'm trying to pull it up myself. Yeah. Yeah. So it's page four, yeah, page four to five, correct.
Thank you.
Great. Are there other questions from council members? Seeing none, we're going to open this up to public comment. Let me go ahead and get my list of participants up here. Okay. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand via Zoom or go ahead and email your comments to publiccomment@tcmail.org. Our first commenter here is going to be Carolyn Svensson, who's got her hand up. Let me get my little stopwatch here. All righty. All right, go ahead.
Okay, thanks very much. I, I, my biggest concern about, about increasing, giving bonuses to hotels. And I do believe, Adam, correct me if I'm incorrect, is that the F A R is virtually double what the current F A R is. And I think the height that we're, of this bonus provides is also double what we currently have. You know, my, my concern is sort of the, the neighborhood that we live in, at Corte Madera, the culture of the town. Do, does the town council consider this to be a wonderful residential community? Or does the town council have the vision that Corte Madera is going to be a substantial commercial hub? Because by doubling these numbers, we're doubling the amount of guests that these hotels can bring in. We're doubling the amount of strangers on our streets, you know, when we have kids, you know, kids all up and down our streets and whatever. I mean, I, I just don't understand what the rationale is. Why our town, why our council is going out of its way, using Adam's resources to give bonuses to corporations, to these big hotels? What is the vision? Why are we doing this? Who can answer that? Anybody on the council? Do we know why we're doing it?
Well, would you like me to respond to, for one clarification, one clarification on that?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So just to put in information, so yes, the F A R is essentially doubling. The height is not. So currently in these zoning districts, both the C three district and the C four district, the current height is 35 feet. And in the M X one district, the current height maximum is 40 feet with planning commission approval. So essentially, you know, what we are talking about is an additional story essentially to a hotel compared to what would be allowed under current, the current regulations for height. And, and, and just with regards, I mean, I'm happy to defer to any member of the council on this, but there, I think a lot of the information and the basis for embarking upon this ordinance came out of the April, I'm sorry, the February twentieth, eight, 2018 town council meeting where we laid out a lot of our existing land use regulations related to hotels, our general plan policies related to non-residential development. We talked about what other jurisdictions had. We talked about the importance of the tax revenue that obviously hotels provide the town, the economic development opportunities that hotels provide, local businesses. And so on. And, and then obviously we've had those conversations at several meetings since then. So but I think that the initial staff report was really instructive, and I know it may have been buried a little bit because it's going back so far, but it is in the staff report on page. Starting on page one forty-nine through page one, I'm sorry, let me get to one fifty-nine.
Okay.
Well, you know, I just would like to add, you know, Corte Madera has already had wind cups to blemish its record. I think that we will be the only town in the county that is now allowing huge hotels, these are substantially bigger hotels right in our residential areas, which we basically are a residential, a residential town. So it almost can't be avoided unless you move these people to quote unquote downtown Corte Madera, which still is fairly residential. So, you know, aside from the embarrassment of us doing this once again, you know, giving, giving way to large corporations, to large developers. I, I just, I just want you all to understand as a council, as representatives of the residents here, that, you know, I think that you're substantially changing the character and the reputation of Corte Madera by allowing even more hotels, larger hotels to come in. And I don't think the public has really asked you to do that. I don't see what the demand is on our budget. I don't see what you do with those extra budget dollars. It just, it just, it just feels like, you know, you've somehow wound up working on behalf of corporations because they asked you to, you know, mistakenly. I'm not saying anyone's a bad person. It's just, I don't know why we're serving corporations rather than the residential and the residents of this town. It's going to change the nature of the town.
Carolyn, that's going to be your three minutes right there.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, would, would you allow a responsive comment on the question that's been raised?
Teresa, can we do that? Or should that wait until we come back for council comments?
I would recommend that they come back for council comments. And certainly the council member could make a note to himself to make sure he doesn't lose track of it if there are lots of comments. But I would recommend that you go through public comment. It's, it's really not public question and answer, it's public comment. And then through the mayor, the mayor can decide what additional information that staff should provide. And then certainly there'll be ample time for council, other council members to answer questions. So certainly the questions should be answered, asked and answered by the council members. But after you get through public comment would be my recommendation.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, David, we'll come back. You can hit on that when we come back for council comments. Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, Teresa. I'm going to go ahead and turn Carolyn off here. The next person with their hand up is Erin, so I will allow Erin to talk.
Yes, hi. I actually emailed in a comment, so I'm not sure if that can be read. And then I can take whatever time is left over because I don't have access to my email at the moment.
Sure. Rebecca, do you have Erin's email?
Yes, Mayor, I do. You ready to start?
Yes, please.
She sent two comments, actually, one for five A and one for five B. So I'll read the portion regarding five A at this time. Approving mitigated negative declaration and zoning ordinance amendment. I would like to support this item and urge council members to do the same. It is a shame that this was initially brought forth in early 2018 with already nearly two years of planning and proposals and has still not been resolved. In the meantime, a struggling locally owned business that has significant annual revenue and community benefits to the town for decades now is now in even more challenging position from which to revive and sustain a vital business. It is imperative that Corte Madera allow hotels to expand in a way that is sustainable as a business in the current and future market. Dilapidated hotels and motels not only fail to provide much needed revenue to the town, they eventually become an eyesore and a blight. On the other hand, allowing appropriately scaled revitalization of these properties attracts visitors who support many other community businesses and is a benefit to local residents who don't have enough space to host visiting friends and family. Please do not waste any more time delaying this important action. Thank you. Erin Carson.
Thank you. Okay, Erin, you're good to go. And you've got about a minute and a half.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. So I also wanted to just respond to the previous commenter's question about the vision for Corte Madera. And I'll tell you what my vision for Corte Madera is. It's not huge corporations or huge hotels. These are really moderate increases in size. And in fact, if you go to the Best Western, if you've been there recently, you'll know that the, the rooms are incredibly tiny. So if they became rooms that were marketable and appropriate for today's market, they're not going to double the number of, of rooms. They're going to create spaces that are appropriate and welcoming to people who visit, people who are our friends and family. They're not strangers. They're business people who are visiting Corte Madera. And they're people that are visiting Marin County and enjoy everything that Marin has to offer that we love to visit every day. I also have a vision for sidewalks where they are wide enough for people to actually walk down and we don't have overhead power lines that are blocking our way through the sidewalks and making them dangerous. I have a vision for undergrounding those, those lines that are, that are unsightly and unsafe. I have a vision for storm sewers that are improved and, and, you know, reduce the, the flooding and the, all the impacts that we have during the rainy seasons. I have a vision that we will have a sustainable tax revenue for the city that, that funds all the amazing parks and community benefits that we have in this amazing city and, and with all of our friends and family that get together on Fourth of July and all these other times. That's the vision that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Erin. All right, we'll go ahead and take Erin off. And our next comment is going to be from Patricia Revazio.
Hello. Hi there. Another, another Revazio to be heard from tonight.
Got them all.
I, I want to say thank you and commend the council and Adam for the work on this. I am, as you know, a great proponent of saving and preserving and restoring our environmental assets. That I believe is why people come to Marin, why they want to stay here. And there are some beautiful ideas for making this pond a lovable retreat where hotel guests can enjoy. And if you have taken the time to go back there, you'll realize that that big berm that's built up between the pond and the highway actually drowns out the highway noise and creates the possibility for a really lovely nature retreat there. So I want to make sure that the environmental, I like the way it's broken down so that if they respond to environmental needs, they get a little bit more F A R. If they respond to community needs such as keeping the swimming pool, which please keep in mind, our community has no public swimming pool available. And losing that was going to be a major drawback for the many residents in Corte Madera. But I really want to make sure that these environmental components really are spelled out. I don't know if they're in detail, but I'm assuming it means they got to have solar panels. They got to have sustainable renewable energy usage and that we need to figure out how to protect the night herons that are already nesting there. And I don't, I know the devil's in the details. And that's all I'm saying is I hope, I hope we've, we really do hang in there and, and make the details come to life because my vision for Corte Madera is that we'll be known as a city and town that really works, but also celebrates what it is that makes Marin special. And that is our natural environmental assets. This pond never was a mud hole and never should be treated as one, just because the hotel has kind of allowed it to go slack. And if I can just, I know I'm running out of time, but there are organizations like Corte Madera Creek, like the Sierra Club, who I've spoken to, who may be interested in coming in and actually using the pond as a project, as an environmental restoration. You know, project for, for the county. And I'm just wondering if anybody has any ideas on how that might be facilitated, since we are obviously going to be keeping the pond now that it's been ruled in unimportant wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. All right. At this time, I do not see any other hands up. Rebecca, have any additional email public comments on this item coming?
No additional emails, public comments on five A.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then there appears to be no more public comments. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for council comments. David, I know you had a comment you wanted to make. So you can start us off.
Thank you. Please. First of all, I, I think that Carolyn Svensson's question is, is a great question is, is the question we should be endeavoring to answer. What is our, our vision for the future? But first, a little bit of recalibration of what the existing reality is. The existing reality is that we have a collection of modest motels and one hotel whose present density ranges from point three, point five to point eight. Corte Madera's standards were down zoned 40 plus years ago to point three, four. So bringing it up from point three, four to point seven, oh, is simply bringing it closer to what the existing conditions are in several of our existing hotels. You agree with me, Adam? On that? Marin Suites, I think is point eight or point eight, one or something like that. And so we're not suddenly doubling what the existing circumstance is. An earlier comment for, from the public at an earlier meeting today said, what are we going to have motel row? Well, actually what we're trying to do is to get away from motel row and not have the lower scale uninspiring 50 style drive up separate entrances from the outside and balconies from the outside, but rather new, efficient, much better and much more environmentally friendly hotels. As to the issue of more than any other town around, actually most of the towns around us have an allowance for a much bigger density than even we're going to now. If we adopt point seven, most of them are at point one, point two. Most hotels, most quality hotels by, yes, national name brand hotels. And we, we want a name brand, not because we love big corporations, but because we love quality. But most of them will only build where they can have the kind of intensity, let's say, so that they can really serve their customers. And, and that, look at the, look at the new designs and new hotels in, in San Rafael in Larkspur, around Larkspur Landing, the country, country mart, there, there's a very nice hotel above the country mart that I think is well above one point five, not point seven, as we're asking for, but one point five. So to build on Erin Carson's great statement of, of vision, I think we're, we're, we should be adopting a vision of quality. And the essence of this, two years of work by the planning commission and by Adam and staff is to reward, as Pat Revazio pointed out, is to reward quality. It's to provide a set of incentives that the better you do for us, the more we will allow you to do here, if it's really high quality. So I, I, I think that the entire effort here is not to give anything away. It's not to have motel row like a monopoly board or hotel road like a monopoly board, but rather to encourage a modest number over the course of the next decade, a modest number of higher quality, environmentally sensitive hotels. Because they are good for business. They shelter the rest of the because they are good for business, they shelter the rest of the town from the noise of the highway. And they will provide places for people to come and visit us, and it's not just strangers. It is tourists who are coming to look at the best things we have. It is people who are newly engaged in business here and they're testing whether or not they want to live here. It's grandparents who are coming to visit those of us who live in town, but don't have enough space to put up the grandparents. It's a variety of supportive requirements that will support our local tax base. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, David. Well said. Charles?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also liked the dialogue. I was on the Planning Commission the last two years and have been going through this. I think there were a lot of good questions and I wrote down a couple of notes. So one is, part of the reason that we would want bigger hotels that bring in better tax bases and just in general, the embracing of corporate tax base in general is because residents in themselves can't really afford to pay for the infrastructural needs that we'll need in the next 30 years. We do need to find those funding resources to basically help with that. I think that the corporations and the retail and all these centers have been part of Corder Madera since the beginning. I've seen the original maps and at the same time that the residents were being built, so were the commercial districts. So I think that those two live in tandem with each other and they're complementary to each other and they're strategically placed where residents are farther up towards the hill or away from the freeways and the freeways are zoned to enhance car and travel. I don't think it's just for tourists. I do know many people within the community that have used them for different reasons. Either as ways to move between homes or update their own homes. Or, you know, right now, we're using them for emergency workers and for people that cannot be in the home because of other reasons. Just having that flexible stock when we don't allow under 30-day rentals currently in the town is the only way that we can address real needs within the community. So I also don't think that the discussion of a pond reflects one instance or even two, you know. On the other side, with the current building that's being built, a small little pond was right off the freeway that affected how, you know, a drive-through dealt with their site planning. So I think that in general, it's just an embracing of anybody has to come in and do that. And I think that incentivize and the ER is giving permission for us to even explore incentivizing, but it does not mean that it's by right. So even if they could go up to 45 feet, it doesn't mean that we'll allow them to. It needs to be appropriate and it needs to fit the conditions in which we give them the bonus through discretionary review on the Planning Commission. So, you know, I think that that's some of the reasons that I think it's good. And I just wanted to share that as a dialogue. You know, I definitely hear the community and know that, you know, everything's questionable and I like the participation. And those applicants are going to have to come back with proposals before it even becomes an application to be thoroughly vetted at each site to see if it's appropriate. And that you'll have time again to give feedback until it's perfect for the community. So I just wanted to share that and thank you all for comments.
Thanks a lot, Charles. Well said. And thanks for the kind of Planning Commission insight there. Bob?
Yeah, just very briefly, if I can just add to these comments. I want to make sure it's really clear, and I think Adam made it really clear, but I want to make sure everyone in the public knows too. The higher FAR is not a right. There are a number of conditions that need to be met. They are incredibly specific, site planning and design, environmental sustainability, community integration, public realm. All that's determined by the design. It's also determined whether or not it meets that by the Planning Commission. So it's not like automatically we get to build a larger hotel, and I think that's a terrific fix in this law. So thank you.
Thanks a lot, Bob. Fred?
Yeah, just one clarification for Adam. In order to get the bonus, the lot has to be at least one acre in size, correct?
Yes, correct.
So when we look at some of these areas, hotel areas that are set up, a lot of those smaller parcels would not qualify for the bonus. Is that correct? So I guess what I'm trying to say, it's a limited number of parcels that would actually qualify for that bonus. So it's not like every single parcel would get the bonus and also we'd have super high density.
Correct.
Right. And in addition to that, it's only four parcels throughout the entire town that are going to be able to do this ever. So.
Right. I was just trying to put it in perspective for people so the perception is not, it's a free-for-all with every single parcel, but it's very limited in which parcels may actually qualify for the bonus. Thanks.
Right. Thank you, Fred. Does anybody else have anything to say? If not, I'll just speak briefly. I just want to, you know, I want to commend staff and the Planning Commission. I think frankly, I think this is a really well-done piece of legislation. I think, you know, everybody who worked in this has been really strategic with where they're placing these zones. If you look there, you know, they're in our commercial districts right along the highways. They're not, you know, in our residential areas and they're not in, for example, old Corder Madera Square where I think, you know, a hotel of any, you know, large size would be out of place. But I think, you know, what we're seeing here to me makes perfect sense. I think, you know, this is important to keeping Corder Madera competitive, letting our hotels stay competitive, right? Because they're eyeing other cities and other towns. If they can't be competitive here, they'll move. And frankly, the tax revenue that's generated by our hotels funds a lot of the services that we all benefit from as Corder Madera residents. So I think this is really important to the local economy and I think it's really important to our quality of life here. I, you know, I think, again, as Fred pointed out, you know, it's limited to a small number of parcels. And at that, you know, only four of those small number of parcels are ever even, you know, theoretically going to be able to do this. So I think it's been laid out in a way where we're making sure that while we're allowing our hotels to be competitive, we're not going to change, you know, the nature or the feel of Corder Madera. And Carolyn, you know, I hear and I understand your concerns and I would absolutely share those concerns if I felt that this, you know, piece of legislation here was not tailored in a way that it wasn't going to change Corder Madera's character. But I feel really confident that the way this is set up is going to really be a win-win for the town. I think that is all I've got to say here. David?
Tiny question. I wanted to, I thought that the Audubon Society's comment on requirement of specialized glass to the greatest extent possible prevent bird strikes on windows was a good one. I couldn't find how the revised version incorporated that. Do you consider that to be incorporated?
Yes, so it's in the revised ordinance 995. I will specify.
I just didn't see it.
Actually, in condition, so it's 1812050 and 1813040. And condition number four should be added and it's so. Yes, I mean, Rebecca, do you have the?
David, it was emailed to the council. It's number four. It's actually on the first page of the email. Item, sub item number four under section 18.12.050, right? And it says, non-reflective glass, fridged glass, lighting, tree screening on lower floors, reduction of unnecessary interior lighting.
Thank you. Okay. If, Mr. Mayor, if you, oh, Bob has something to say.
I have one more question, Eli.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
For staff. I know we've done this in an earlier meeting and David just alluded to it in his comments, but what do other towns have? Adam, do we know what other towns are using for floor area ratio for hotels so that we can put this into context?
Yes. So let me go back to that. So, you know, this was back in, that was in that original staff report from 2018. So most others sort of start around .34 but allow up to over 1, to 1.3. Sausalito's .35 to 1.3 depending on where you are in town. Nevada's .4 up to 1.2 again, and it's, you're designating areas which are either close to other arterials likely. San Anselmo is actually higher, 1 to 2 FAR. There's a, we've talked about, I think there's up to the one in Larkspur Landing that they're proposing or planned for is one FAR for a specific plan. So, and then to that point, the ones that have been built recently, particularly Extended Stay, American, San Rafael, .9, the Marriott Courtyard in Nevada was .64. I mean, this is going back some time. The NBC Suites by the Civic Center is .74. So, you know, those are some of them. And the more recent ones that have been proposed and not yet constructed in San Rafael are higher.
This makes this more consistent with other towns in Marin County, basically.
Yeah, and I would say those other ones don't have also those specific criteria and those other things that we're adding to make sure it achieves the quality that the county desires.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Great question. If there are no other comments from council members, I would entertain a motion first on resolution 222020.
I'll move.
Second.
Great. Rebecca, it's been moved and seconded. A vote, please.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Revazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coonheart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Thank you. And I will also entertain a motion to introduce ordinance number 995.
I'd like to introduce or suggest that we have the first reading of ordinance number 995 as worded.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Rebecca, a vote, please.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Revazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coonheart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. All right. That brings us to 5B, which is consideration, possible adoption of an urgency ordinance, which would authorize businesses to operate outside. Teresa, can I get away with doing plain speak like that?
I think we can just say that it is as reflected on the agenda.
As reflected on the agenda. Thank you. Teresa, staff, take it away.
Hey. Sorry, one moment.
Adam, God bless you and your team and the commission. I mean, it's just, this is amazing, the work you guys do. I mean, this is.
One moment, please. I'm going to try to switch to another outdoor use permits.
I'm actually gonna, if you don't mind, just to make it abundantly clear that the ordinance that was introduced, I want to make clear that it was the version that staff provided yesterday with the revisions regarding bird safe measures.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Thank you, Teresa. Good catch. Yes, that is correct.
Can we get a clarification from all the council members that that was their intended vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I see five eyes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The record will reflect the confirmed vote.
Great.
Now, Adam can sleep better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again, Mayor and council members. So this evening, we're going to discuss really introducing and adopting an urgency ordinance. But really, it's about implementing a temporary outdoor dining and business program. And so I just wanted to walk through exactly what we're talking about this evening. You may have read some of this in the Marin IGA recently, and this is sort of our take on that same ordinance and same program that really is tailored to our community and our local businesses. So really, the purpose here is to create immediate opportunities or create immediate opportunities for local restaurants and other businesses to, as it says, increase their operational capacity by permitting the use of outdoor space while complying with the social distancing and other safety provisions in my county health order. So.
Excuse me. Adam, I think you might still be sharing your hotel presentation.
Oh, I am.
You have to click on the share screen and then select the next item that you have open.
I apologize.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to stop sharing and then I'm going to start sharing again. Let's try this again. There we go.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca, very much. That's helpful. Do not want to go over that one again. Okay, so in essence, there's an immediate need. As many of you know, at least from the Marin County, the Marin County Health Officer and the revised order, most recent one, permitted outdoor dining as of June 1st. And hopefully, it was clear to all those involved that it was permitted as long as local rules were followed and local regulations allowed it to, outdoor dining to do so. But, so there's this immediate need to permit some local businesses to be able to do that. That's restaurants and potentially other businesses. Outdoor retail was also allowed pursuant to that June 1st health order. That may not be so relevant as it appears that we may have indoor retail shortly, but you never know. So.
Adam, excuse me for interrupting, but if you could please launch the slideshow so that it gets bigger in size. My aging eyes have a hard time with the little.
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. So that's the immediate purpose. Secondly, there's also a sort of medium-term purpose, which is really to, when indoor dining is allowed or when gyms, for example, are allowed to reopen indoor and whenever that is, and potentially some other types of uses, that there's an ability for those businesses to expand their operational capacity by, you know, they're going to have to maintain their social distancing requirements inside of those spaces. And so there may not be the same capacity indoors. And so this will allow, in the medium term, some additional room to maintain or hopefully maintain, if not increase, their business operations as compared to what they would otherwise be able to do. And so that's sort of a medium-term opportunity that we're trying to support. And then finally, I think importantly, it's also just, this is an opportunity really to help encourage some enjoyable community activity in a safe environment. And I think some of what, I'm sure if you haven't experienced outdoor dining or any sort of going out and dining, it seems to be sorely needed for many of us at the moment and sort of a way to just engage with other community members and our local businesses and sort of, I was talking to one of our local, one of our local business owners today and just for him to hear people laughing outside while they're enjoying that glass of wine was, felt good for that business owner. So those are some of the purposes. And just to get into how we're going to do that and what the potential applicability of this urgency ordinance really is, there's really three main things we're talking about. One is permitting the temporary private use of public space, such as a sidewalk. So as you can see in this photo, really Zen's Wine Bar, they already have sort of this operation up and running, but it would permit similar types of private use of public space, such as tables and chairs on a sidewalk. It would also permit temporary private use of public space in a parking area, such as, this is just an image from, I think, San Francisco, where it shows these are often termed parklets where seating areas sort of take over some parking spaces that are in the public right of way. And this is sort of an example, this was taken at 3:20 or 3:30 today, just that old Corder Madera Square. And you can see, you know, our parking spaces aren't really heavily used at the moment. And the fact that these are sort of head-in and head-out diagonal spaces, there is room to sort of do that sort of thing as well to support some of the restaurants and local businesses that are immediately adjacent to this area. Sorry for the red, you can ignore it through the red thing. Here's another type of use, actually. This is the back of. Five Point Fitness over on Paradise Paradise Drive. And actually, they had, and you'll see there was a sort of a pad out in the back. There's not many people back here. It's it's sort of an area where this gym, once they are able to reopen, could occupy. And so we're not only talking about. Parking areas, but also sort of just leftover spaces. That sort of function as additional space that could be occupied. And this is a good example. I sort of bring this one up because frankly, this is what they did. They had previously. But this actually turned into a code case. Several years back because that's not permitted under our current zoning ordinance. So in fact, we had to tell them to move everything back inside. Our current zoning ordinance does not permit those outdoor uses. On private property. Another potential applicability, and this is something that is permitted, but it's also. You know, sort of these outdoor dining areas, again, on private property. So this is permitting private use of private space. And and this is this is obviously a little dated photo, but it's back. It's at the Marketplace Center. So why why do we need this urgency ordinance? Are existing regulations to do things such as occupy. A areas of the public right of way with private uses. Currently, that requires an encroachment permit. To to place any objects on the sidewalk or in parking areas. If you're doing so on private property, it gets even more complicated in some respects in that very much, you know, our zoning regulations will often require a conditional use permit. Design review or other or compliance with parking regulations. So a lot of times, taking over some private. Parking lots with with a restaurant or a gym would not be possible because you'd be creating a non-conformity situation. There's obviously there's application fees. There's there's time involved. And. What the ordinance urgency ordinance would do would really to create temporary outdoor encroachment permit, what we're calling. A T O E, not 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 toe. I just realized that actually says toe, but. We're not doing that, but it would waive fees. It would expedite processing. That's a commitment we're making as a town. We're going to make these applications really easy to fill out. Obviously, we'd still need to require agreement with the town for indemnity and damage deposits and things like that. Although we're looking to minimize the. Amounts that would be required. And then there would be a plan. There would be a physical plan that would need to be submitted as part of this application. And the town would review for operation, operational, physical. Components of that plan for safety, mostly vehicle vehicular, bike, pet, safety, ADA, emergency egress, things like that. Still, definitely, the town needs to be involved in. And so that's where I think. It's important when. And I came across this actually today that hopefully our local businesses understand that just because the Marin Health Order said outdoor dining is now allowed, that. You can't just put stuff now out outside in your street. Or in our in towns right away or on the private parking lot or anywhere on private property, just because the health order says so. It still needs to be reviewed for safety. By the town. So that's the temporary outdoor encroachment permit. And then this temporary outdoor use permit, which actually should say T O U, I believe. Would do similar things in that it would waive a fee. It would require an application, but it would be waived a fee for the application, expedited processing. And it would importantly, and I didn't put this in here, but it would importantly waive a lot of the current zoning regulations. That would otherwise be required in the zoning districts on private property, such as the the parking requirements. And so you could actually create some non-conforming parking requirements. And also, you wouldn't have to go through a design review process, which currently in all of these districts is a very. Any of those uses would likely require some designer view or even a conditional use permit. Again, we would be reviewing that. The town would be reviewing those things. And approval would be by the town manager or designate. At the sole discretion of the town manager or designate. And then importantly, there would be an automatic expiration of this, but this is the temporary nature of it. Really, what urgency ordinance does is. Allow these permits to be issued. Up until November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Unless revoked sooner by the town by town council resolution. So theoretically, if. You know, if 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 we are able and and let's say the Marin County Health Department and the health order is revised and we don't need to have social distancing requirements, it doesn't look likely, but let's say that happens. There could be some or any other reason the town council could by resolution revoke. This program earlier and we would provide ten days for the private entity to. Sort of remove any improvements and get the the space back to what it was before. Just a general note, and I think this is important because I don't. I may be proven wrong, but I don't. I don't think we are in a similar situation to some other jurisdictions with in terms of how many businesses may actually utilize this program. I think the most likely. Types of businesses that may see this as really powerful and helpful are the ones that are in our sort of older. Quarter, you know, old quarter Madera Town Square. We have talked to already the owner of Zen's, Burma Town. We've been, I've, you know, we've, I was on the. Well, I've talked to Julie Kritzberger about this. Obviously, the shopping centers, a lot of our dining is already in the shopping centers. A lot of our retail is also in the shopping centers. And though they have their own private areas that are already approved for outdoor dining and moving things around. In the center of the pedestrian walkways and things like that. But it does allow if there are other needs that they do have in those centers for parking areas or other areas of their of their properties. This would allow that flexibility, at least for them to propose a a plan for that. But again, there's not the high demand that I see some. I know Sausalito, for example, they already have about twenty five to thirty applicants for this. And as you know, Sausalito has a lot of sort of storefront retail and storefront restaurants as compared to quarter Madera. I feel like Teresa, please add anything if I'm I'm missing anything here. I, you know, Teresa. Also worked, you know, she she really led a lot of this effort and and I also would should say this came out of. My work on the, there was an outdoor dining team put together with other folks in the county. And I was a member of that along with. The Mill Valley Town Town City Manager and and. I think there was also the police chief over in Tiburon was on that team. And so there was a very good collaborative effort and a sharing of resources here. And so I think. What you're seeing is the result of that, where each of our different jurisdictions are going to be coming out with. Ways in which we're trying to support our local businesses in this manner. And this is similar to what others are doing, but it's sort of our own take on that, given our our the differences of our town versus some others. Teresa?
So I'd just like to add two things. First, I would like to also say that Assistant Town Attorney and Danforth also put in awful lot of time into this, and I just wanted to thank her for that as well. And I wanted to. Just make sure that the council realizes this is an urgency ordinance. It requires four out of five council members, at least with an affirmative vote to in order for it to pass. It gets passed on one reading. And if you pass it today, unless you otherwise provide, it goes to into effect immediately. Which would mean that as soon as town staff is able to finalize the application process and push those out, then. The applications could be considered as soon as staff is ready to to have that process start.
Is that it?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you, Adam. Thank you, Teresa, and thank you. And we'll take council questions now. Fred?
Yeah, I got a just a couple of questions. By the way, great job, Adam, especially with the speed you acted with this. I think it's great. I think it's a great program for the businesses in our town. Just a couple of questions. This has a hard end date of November, I think, sixteen. If we wanted to extend it, can it be extended or or how would that process work? I'll give you all my questions at once. That's one question. The other one is if we approve this tonight, it sounds like it's enacted immediately. How and again, I don't mean to put pressure on you. How fast would it be the timeframe to put together an application so businesses can start actually applying for this? And then sometimes I look at worst case, and that is if there is one that's approved, it gets set up and somebody has a complaint about it. What is the complaint process? Does that go to you? Does it go to Todd? How does that work?
Okay. Teresa, if we go in order, what can you speak to the extended? How did can the council extend this urgency ordinance if so, if they desire to do so prior to November sixteen? And I will just say that November sixteenth date for two reasons. Obviously, that's coming up on the the prime shopping season, and so there may be additional need for, you know. Some of the parking areas or or and frankly, some of the retail areas as well. And also, it's also obviously for dining, it starts to get a little bit iffy in terms of weather and whatnot and whether that's actually a need at that point. So.
There's always heat lamps.
Right. So can I can I add a couple of questions to that as well? So if it is that over the summer, it's deemed really beneficial to the community from like a growth standpoint. Is by November sixteenth, could there be an actual adoption of a more permanent kind of solution to allow businesses to to function like that if the community feels that it's a benefit? So I just want to tag that on. Either it's an emergency and we keep going, or it's, hey, you know, they've done this at every other town permanently. Why aren't why haven't we? Kind of. And it would probably be a separate process, I understand. But and then the other thing is is outdoor. Can that be? So in the one that you showed with the gym, it showed it covered, right? It had like an actual canopy. So addressing weather and stuff as we move into the, you know, fall season or even in the sun. Hopefully, that type of experience would be permitted and still considered outdoor. I just, but I just my question about it.
So I will start with the extension question. If you want to extend it, it can be it would be done through another ordinance, so you would have to come back and extend it. If it's done through an emergency ordinance, again, it's it's a one one step process. If you were to make these kinds of changes permanently, you would have to go through. Go to the planning commission and go through a planning commission process. At least as to the zoning changes. And so there there would be a longer process and certainly for a permanent kind of ordinance, we would be looking at. You know, a planning commission process where one would be required as well as two readings and the thirty day adoption. So there is an ability to come back if circumstances warrant it. We would you would need to be able to make the findings to support an urgency ordinance, which are, you know, geared toward public health and safety. So and then. Adam, do you want to? Do you want to talk about? And yes. I believe this was answered, but it does take effect immediately should should the ordinance pass this evening. Adam, you want to talk about how long you think the process will take?
Yeah, I mean, in in fact, you know, we've. In the last couple of days, we've I've. I know actually today, we're going to be, I should also mention that R.J. Suco has also been very active and and obviously, this is going to be. Something that Public Works is very much involved in. As anytime we're going to be touching the sidewalk or a. Parking area, you know, he's going to be looking at this and his team will be looking at the vehicular safety aspect and pedestrian safety and whatnot. So we're working hand in hand. We were up today. I know he was up with Martha, the Tavlia, earlier today up at Burma Town, talking to them about specifically. And this is sort of how we see working with our businesses. It's like, let's. Let's walk up there and let's just map it out and look at what could work and what couldn't and and then come back and you get, you know. Get an aerial or something like that and draw it on a little bit and and sort of go and verify that it's. It's sort of working from a public safety standpoint and 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 working closely in that fashion with the the business owner. So they were up there today. You know, we are working on a sort of a a specific agreement. Or an agreement for encroachment permits that would be specific to this type of temporary permit. And that's being worked on by the, you know, the town attorney. And but hopefully, that, you know, I expect by the end of this week, we would have that finalized. And so it, you know, I I see this being able to be done, provided the only other thing that we have to consider is. The protection. Infrastructure that is sort of needed. And some of those things are sort of like the K rails and there's the ones that you fill with water. You know, given that it is temporary and this we're not talking permanent at this point. Expediency is also more important. It's not going to be, I think, the most visibly visually pleasing, but it actually will do the job. And I think that at this point, that's more important. And so we, you know, we have some of RJ's already taken inventory of that. And so we can start really on a first come, first basis, starting to roll that out, you know, and hopefully. A week or or two to get people up and running, if not, if not sooner.
Thanks. And again, great job.
I had another question based on that also. So, you know, a lot of this ordinance addresses outdoor dining and retail, but a part of that component is also pickup now. So could a could a could a restaurant, you know, pick up if you're not comfortable eating around people still and you want to pick it up? Are we also enabling kind of white curb type drop off drop zones for for people so that they could basically designate that temporarily as part of this as well? Or is it only about occupying the space?
You know, it frankly, I think this was written pretty broadly in in a sense in that. You know, that it could be, it's not just for dining, but it's for operations of businesses. In the in the public right of way. You know, I think what we're going to look at is what are the needs of our local businesses and try to try to figure out how to make it work, right? And we have seen some that as I was up at Burma Town today, they've almost done that with the makeshift sort of carved out a couple of parking spots for themselves. And I, you know, we're not. That seems to be a safe, the safe way to do it and allows them to. Actually serve the community. And in that regard, you know, that that seems appropriate. This maybe if they wanted to put make it formalized it now, which we which we could do. And sort of review the safety of it just to make sure it's working properly, then then we could hold it in under this. This urgency ordinance, I would think, yeah.
And. I'm sorry, this is Fred again. The last part of the question I had, how would complaints be handled if one does get approved and then somebody complains about, again, would that go through you? Through the town manager? How would that process work?
Yeah, we envision it really going through the town manager's office and then us and Todd and, you know, all of us problem solving. Hopefully, Todd has done enough to shore up that aspect of it, given everything else he's working on. But yeah, you know, we we problem solve and certainly we're encouraging all the, I was just, again, I was up at Zen's and as I'm up there, you know, he's talking to his the neighboring business owner, and this has to be a collaborative process. But I think. We're encouraging all the business owners to talk to their neighbors to. And and to really, but but everything I've seen tends to. You know, they're all pulling together to try to make things work at this point. But I understand the concern. It's not to say that we may not have some complaints and I think we'll. We'll have to just take those in and try to problem solve those the best we can and.
Thanks.
So I will I will add that these permits are revocable by the town.
So I will, I will add that these permits are revocable by the town. For any reason. And so if there are unanticipated problems that can't be resolved. And there's really no way around them, then we could be in a situation where the permit got revoked. I would assume that staff would really try to exhaust, you know, whatever is reasonable to fix it. But if there is some terrible unintended consequence, it can be addressed. We're not stuck with it.
Thanks Teresa. David?
Two cool questions. First of all, great initiative, great creativity, great effort by all who have worked on this. I am curious, it, I know that it takes effect immediately according to the ordinance, but. What's, what's it going to take for the appropriate application forms? What what's the rough timeframe that you're looking at here? That's that's question one. And and question two will be, you know. Giving up, giving up real estate is something that sometimes is a ratchet. It goes in one direction and it's hard to reclaim. And I, so I like the deposit on any, anyone who is going to. Try to lay down some new stake on what is now a public, public property. These are practical give and take issues, but we just, we do need to be careful. Thank you.
Right. And so the application, you know, I think we are in the process. I do think we'll have, we're working on the encroachment permit today. Which is not frankly, that much different than the current encroachment permit process. You know. We know what's required, so we're going to, we're going to. Start, we've already started working with some of them about how to submit and what to submit. But we're trying to make this as easy as possible. And so. You know, I, I think it's going to be a combination, frankly, unless we just get inundated with the number of requests for this. But. You know, I think we've already started sort of compiling some of the application materials along with. You know, just based on our conversations with some of the the business owners we talked to today. So it's not frankly, it's not an onerous process. As long as we make sure we're hands on and we're going to, we do have a process for verifying that it is. Is safe and and complies with all. Required sort of. Safety measures and including ADA and things like that. So but that's going to, I think we we feel we can, these are all temporary movable objects, so we can sort of feel field verify those things. And so we're rather sort of start the process and get them up and then work with the owners to sort of. Make sure that they're in the right, exact locations that that work.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members before we move to public comment? Nope. Great. Okay, then we're going to turn this over to the public for questions or comments. Any members of the public who are on the line, please raise your hand via Zoom if you would like to ask us anything or make a comment. And you can also email publiccomment@tcmail.org. David McPherson's got his hand up, so we're going to go to David. Hello, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. First of all. Once again, I'm incredibly impressed with how planning the town council has done so much so quickly with. Limited resources and staff. It's just a, I'm grateful for that. Rebecca, I had sent an email and I don't have access to that. Could you read the first part of my email and then I'll use the balance of my time?
Yes, sir. Your email was received and it was forwarded to the town council and posted on the town's website for the public to view. Mr. McPherson says, Mayor Beckman and town council members. We are grateful to the town for actively taking steps to assist restaurants reopen. For outdoor seating and expand the limits of their service area. Please note that the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control, ABC, has released a fast track expansion process. To help restaurant licensees use nearby spaces and comply with social distancing guidelines in California. Please advise Corder Madera restaurants that they may submit the application below via email to the local ABC district office. And the ABC will confirm expanded licensed seating via email usually within 48 hours. Thank you. And then the email gives a link to abclicencocom. If you go to that website, you should be able to find that link.
Thank you. What I also wanted to say, based upon some work that I've been doing with Sausalito restaurants, is that these temporary parklets. Pretty much require a concrete barrier. These are incredibly difficult to resource right now for the restaurants and are actually quite expensive. So it occurs to me that if a corporate yard has. Concrete barriers that could be loaned to Bermatown, Benissimo or Zins to create these parklets. That would be really helpful as well as landscaping. I don't know whether or not. The the town has a backlog of landscaping that that sits and is watered and can be also loaned out to these restaurants to help them. And then finally, it occurs to me that the ABC allows kind of a shared use of an extended. Outdoor area. So somebody like Zins could partner with Benissimo and they could actually utilize part of Mankey Park. If that was seemed like an appropriate place. So for example. Poggio in Sausalito is actually going to have their their servers. Cross the street and use a little piazza that's in front of the Bank of America to serve. So it's not inconceivable to me that Zins, Bermatown. And Benissimo could use Mankey Park if it was. You know, adequately protected and has socially distanced seating. Thank you.
Thank you, David. RJ, I see you just came on the line. Did you want to respond real brief?
Yeah, sure. I can definitely respond to the, you know, traffic safety component. So we've already done some reconnaissance on some of the ones you mentioned, Zins and Bermatown and Benissimo. We have a good idea of what. You know, what would be a reasonably safe measure that would also allow them to expand into those parklets would also. Provide dining zones for ADA and meet, you know, reasonable standards and we'll verify that with our ADA coordinator. You know, the the concrete K rail certainly is a. One acceptable option. And then these water filled K rails are another. And there is guidance on. You know, how to implement those and along with, you know, kind of our. Our department's knowledge of traffic safety standards, we're comfortable working with the the property owners and make it. Something that works for for them and then also is safe for the public.
Thank you, RJ. All right. Thank you, David. Our next comment is going to come from Suzie Beatty.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you? I have kind of a silly question. It's just about dogs and food and health department. Automatically when there are, there is outdoor dining, do, I mean, Marin is such a dog place. Will people automatically be able to bring their dogs? Is that an approved thing that happens already or something that you have to address? And frankly, I don't care one way or the other. I'm just curious about it. I love what you're doing. Thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you, Suzie. Yeah, RJ.
And sorry, if I may add one more point to respond to David McPherson's comment is we do have. A dozen or so of the. K rails that are filled with water that could serve a couple, possibly two to three businesses currently in hand. And then if this is something that the council wants us to seek out and try to gather some more, we can definitely reach out to our contacts to see how many more we can get.
Thank you, RJ. And did any staff members want to respond to Suzie Beatty or should we follow up offline?
I'm just curious if it's automatic or not.
No, I, one thing that we should, we should mention is, is, you know, all of these restaurants are still going to have to follow. Safety protocols that are spelled out by the Marin County Health Order. And so it's, you know, those are going to have to be posted up on their windows and whatnot. And so. I don't know offhand if they address the issue of pets. So I think it's a good question. But I think we would follow the guidance of the Marin Health Order in that respect rather than create our own rules.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Suzie. All right, there is, nobody else has their hand up right now. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments?
Yes, Mayor Beckman. Aaron Carson also submitted a comment via email regarding this item.
Great.
Regarding five B urgency authorization for temporary permits for restaurants and commercial businesses to operate. We have followed the CDC, state and local health orders carefully. And the result is a flattening of the curve. Residents and business owners alike now need to safely return to retail and restaurant activity. This can be done in a thoughtful and safe manner that will not negatively impact the gains that we have accomplished. And will help to address many other impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic related to people's jobs, livelihood and lifestyles. First and foremost, safety should be emphasized and these permits should ensure that if such safety protocols are not followed, the permit may be revoked. Please trust Corder Madera residents to continue to be thoughtful and careful in their interactions while helping our community get back on its feet. Thank you, Aaron Carson.
Great. Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, Rebecca. Seeing no further public comment. Rebecca, that was the only email, right?
That's correct. And and the one that David McPherson submitted.
Right. Yeah. Awesome. Okay, thanks. Then seeing no further public comment, we're going to bring it back to the council for council comments. Would anybody like to make any further comments before we go ahead and take a motion? Charles?
All right. Well, I think this is great. For RJ, I, if we do need more, I was, I had a few thoughts. Galodi Brothers, because we're going to be doing work with them, Caltrans, maybe the county. And I don't know if you can use police barriers as well, but that might be another resource, you know, that can basically take that kind of resistance. I do a lot of K rail design at SFO, so I know they have miles of it. So then the other thing is, is, you know, this is about safety. It's just, you know, it's safety for the diners, but it's also safe, safe, safely enabling this process. And I care much more about people and jobs than I care about cars and zone, temporary zoning kind of condition. So I can really stand behind it and, you know, because of my interest in smart growth principles. I don't know why we haven't already had a mechanism to enable this in a more permanent way. You know, the towns that I've lived in in my life, Pleasanton, Santa Cruz, San Francisco, they all have really healthy functioning downtowns. And part of that is this very thing that we're talking about, but permanently enabled and rented space like that. And by basically allowing the people to be out in the community, it actually brings the community together and in a lot of ways. Enlivens the the entire experience. So that's why I just think that it'll be a great experiment to see if it works for this town. I did see it hadn't been implemented, the parklets and the sidewalks at Fillmore when I moved to San Francisco. And after they implemented it, it it definitely over 10 years changed to a very high rent district and, you know. Reenlivened that whole area. So I'm excited to see what this means for the community overall. I also, you know. The the covering, whether they can cover, just, you know, to understand that. And then the other one is I like the idea of the gyms. We have a lot of gyms and preschool, like, you know, children's kind of gyms and that kind of thing and allowing to expand out. Maybe they'll put some sand and we can have like a Venice muscle beach, you know, it's. The idea of public, private gyms is or in in those kind of open spaces has worked really well in certain instances, so. The only other one also that I've I've thought about personally is outdoor movies. So, you know, if there's a large parking spot, a space with a huge sidewall and people are less. Inclined to go into, you know, a space, but they can tune into the radio and perhaps watch. I've seen a couple of communities be able to implement that. If we'd be interested in kind of seeing if if we could create those kind of experiences as well and anything else, but. And I don't know if that's covered, but those are some of the exciting things I think we're going to see pop up soon, so.
Thank you, Charles. Any other, yeah, Fred?
Yeah, just one quick comment on the the movie part. I've approached that idea with Todd and also Ashley Head of Parker Rec. To see if we could partner with the movie theater in Corder Madera and use their parking lot on the backside for a drive in movie. So.
Cool. Thank you. Any other comments from council members? If not, I will entertain a motion on urgency ordinance number 996.
Yeah, this is Fred. I, I'll make a motion that we adopt the urgency ordinance authorizing issuance. Of temporary permits to allow restaurants and other commercial businesses to write outdoor business operations on private property and certain types of town owned property.
I second it.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coonheart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Absolutely. All right. The urgency ordinance passes. That wraps up our public hearings and brings us to business items. Our first business item is six A consideration of possible action to adopt resolution number 232020, amending the 2019 2020 budget. Daria, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor and town council. This item is the second budget revision for the current fiscal year. The budget was last revised in January. But this second revision has become necessary due to the COVID-19 emergency. Which is expected to materially impact the town's finances. So the details are in the staff report and I'll just, I'll go over it in summary fashion, if that's all right, and answer questions. There are four funds that we're requesting be revised. All of them actually roll up to the general fund in the financial statements, but are segregated on the town books for ease of tracking. So the first fund is what we call the general fund, which is our operating fund, which is for the day to day activities of the town. And the main revision, as you can see, is that revenue is being decreased by $1,408,000. And the bulk of that decrease is a $1 million sales tax decrease, which is being estimated. For the entire year, the entire fiscal year, that would be a 15% reduction. But for the the fourth quarter, which is where the bulk of the impact is expected to be felt, that's a 60%. Impact. It's 60% decrease to the fourth quarter. In addition to that, the transient occupancy tax is being reduced by $233,000. That's the tax collected from the hotels. And that's about 30% of that budget. Other expenditures, which are smaller in amount are interest revenue due to the fact that. We expect smaller cash balances and interest rates have decreased. Are are being decreased that interest revenue budget by $50,000. And then construction fees also are being decreased. Whether that's for the COVID-19 emergency or not, I'm not sure, but they are down, you know, they. They're down, so that's included. And then expenditures are being increased by $100,000 for additional services and supplies related to this COVID-19 event. Many of those may be reimbursed by FEMA. We don't know exactly. If they will or when they will be, but those sorts of things are sanitizing the town buildings. Legal expenses really related to the COVID-19, purchasing wash basins and protective equipment for employees. And computer equipment. So staff can work at home, so that may be reimbursed. And then also, having nothing to do with COVID-19, the community services coordinator position has been added to the general fund. That was previously a contract position being paid for out of the sales tax fund. But because of liability reasons. It's now an employee position and we don't pay employees out of the sales tax fund, but we are asking that it would be reimbursed. It's about $24,600 for this year. So the net increase to the the operating fund is. Decreasing the ending balance by $1,708,000, which would bring that ending balance to approximately $4.3 million. The second fund being revised is the Corder Madera Sales Tax Override Fund. And the the revenue is being decreased by $726,000, again, due to COVID-19. That that estimate is from HDL, which is the town's sales tax. Information providers. And then we are asking that expenditures be increased by $284,000. The largest increase being $200,000. to be given to businesses, local businesses in the form of grants. That was reviewed by the Sales Tax Override Oversight Committee and approved. Also, there are some, that community resilience coordinator position that I mentioned. We're asking that the Sales Tax Committee reimburse the general fund for that. And vegetation management, which has nothing to do with COVID-19, is just, was just attacked very aggressively this year. And so it's still going on, the abatements and so forth. And so that is asking for $50,000 additional from the Sales Tax Override Fund. So these changes would reduce the sales tax fund's balance by $11,0600 for an ending fund balance of about $8.7 million. And when the $2.5 million reserve is taken into account, that would be about $6.2 million that would be available. The third fund being revised is Park Madera Center. Rental income is expected to be reduced by about $100,000. That's due mainly to rent deferrals and also about half of that, a little more than half of that $100,000 has to do with underground work being done there at the center. And the last fund that's being revised is the Street Impact Fees Fund. That fund collects fees to defray all or part of the impact to the streets related to construction projects. And this is, I had budgeted $400,000 in revenue in that fund based on the prior year collecting a little more than $400,000, but it's down this year. Right now, we've collected less than $190,000, so I'm reducing that revenue. The ending fund balance is expected to be $600,000 in that fund. So those are the revisions. The cash is what, you know, many people are probably interested in. And on attachment two of the staff report, I've done an estimate of what I believe the ending balances will be for all of the town funds. The sanitary district isn't included in there, but other funds, they are just the town funds. And the ending balance is not completely cash, because there will be some accruals both for revenue and expenditures. But the vast majority of that ending balance of $14.9 million is cash. So the town is, you know, it's not expecting to run out of cash as a result of this, you know, this drastic budget revision. And then attachment three will show, those are the funds that make up the general fund. The first attachment was all the funds. This is just the general fund. And you can see that, again, that's not all cash, because there will be some accruals at the end of the year. But it's about $12 million in cash. And then of that $12 million, $2.5 million is the reserve for the Sales Tax Fund for emergencies, which I mentioned a moment ago. And then about $2,175,000, that's 10% of expenditures and transfers out in the operating fund. And that is, that 10% reserve level was set by the Town Council several years ago. And then the final attachment shows those town funds. And then it shows the sanitary district is also expected to have $1 million in cash at the end of the year. And I did ask the town manager, the town auditor, you know, what would happen if for some reason the town, you know, spent all of its cash and, you know, is it even allowed to borrow from the sanitary district if that was necessary? If we don't think it would be. And he said, yes, so long as the sanitary district board and the council would approve such a thing. And there was a written agreement. So that's listed on there. And then the trust accounts are listed on there as well. Those are the balances. The pension trust as of April 30th and the OPEB trust balance as of March 30th. We're not expecting to draw on those at all, but I just included those balances, so you could see them. And then in terms of next year's budget, there was a two-year budget that was adopted last year for the current year and the upcoming year, but that, of course, will have to have a major revision next year's. And we're working on that, attempting to have as minimal a deficit in the operating fund as we can. Some of these changes may, to offset, you know, major revenue reductions, may include reducing or eliminating the pension trust contributions, although not drawing on the pension trust. Reducing department budget. And there's a vacant engineer position that may be replaced by student interns at a lower rate. So we're working on that. And then in terms of the Sales Tax Fund reduction, we're thinking that we'll be reducing capital projects planned for that fund in favor of sanitary district projects. Since the sanitary district, their revenue will not be affected by this, because they rely mainly on property tax and sewer user fees. So that concludes my report and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Thanks a lot, Daria. Lot of sad news in there, but we appreciate you bringing up this information so that we can have, you know, an accurate picture of the situation. That's critical. Any questions from council members? Yeah, David?
Am I muted? No. Daria, you've done a lot. If I could try to summarize, and please tell me how this is an inaccurate or accurate summary. If you compare in your overview, changes in fund balance from July 1, 2019 to the estimated, essentially June 30, 2020, one year, we're down by almost exactly 5 million. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that is, that is true. That is true. That is true. About a million of that is capital projects from the Corder Madera Sales Tax Fund. But the bulk of it is from the general fund. That's going down by about $2 million. And then there are other funds that we're spending down, capital project funds. Yes, that's correct.
All right. And then in spite of that, we still have two pretty healthy reserves that add to almost 5 million, two and a half and 2.2 million. Is that?
Yes, that's true.
And we still have, the estimated transfers out of just under a million. Is that in the next month? Or is that to round out the fiscal year?
That's for the entire year. The general fund, that is mostly, well, it's the $200,000 to the recreation fund and then it's $150,000 to the insurance fund. Because the insurance fund doesn't have any real revenue of its own. The general fund has to pay for it. The $200,000 to the recreation fund is included in this budget revision, since recreation classes are canceled and, or, you know, for the most part. And then, let's see, what's the other one? The Corder Madera Sales Tax Override Fund. That is, I think about $150,000 of that is to pay for the project manager who was paid for out of the general fund. But in the adopted budget, it was included that the Sales Tax Fund would pay for it. It's the $24,000 that was for the community resilience coordinator. And then it's also, let's see.
Okay, there are three, pardon me, but there are three labels that you've used. One is community services coordinator, one is the resilience, and the other was wildfire reduction, wildfire fuel reduction. Are those the same? Are we talking about the same?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's called community, I think it's called community resilience coordinator. Yeah.
Okay.
That's Marla. She's all everything. Yeah, jack of all trades.
I just didn't know whether you were talking about three people.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Great. Thank you. Any other, yeah, does someone want to say something?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, are there any other questions from council members before we turn this over for public comment? No, seeing none. Okay, then we're going to open this up for public comment. Any members of the public who want to ask us a question or comment on this, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, have you gotten any email comments on this item?
We have not received any emailed public comments on this item.
Okay. And I do not see any members of the public with their hands up. So seeing no public comment, we're going to bring it back to the council for council comments and a potential motion. Any council comments here? If not, I would entertain a motion that we adopt resolution 232020.
Done, moved.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Rebecca, vote, please.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coonheart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. Great. Thank you. That brings us to 6B, which is discussion and direction to staff regarding the possible approval and use of $50,000 from the Sales Tax Fund for housing assistance for Corder Madera residents impacted by COVID-19. Lorena, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, council members. Can everyone hear me? Okay, perfect. So before you, it was a staff report written regarding the request for assistance for the request for funds for housing assistance for residents in Corder Madera. So this was mentioned in two other meetings. It kind of goes along with the idea that we had for providing assistance to businesses in Corder Madera. And from that idea, we created the Small Business Disaster Relief Fund, where we provided grants to over 100 small businesses in town. For the housing assistance, though, there was an idea that came about from the Corder Madera Community Foundation, where they offered to donate $25,000 to the town, as long as we would be able to match that donation and provide rental or basically housing assistance to residents in town. So similarly to the Business Disaster Relief Fund, town manager Cusamano explained this idea to the Sales Tax Committee, because the funds would come from the Sales Tax Fund. And basically, the committee members had no opposition. They just requested that we have like a fair review process and give a fair opportunity to residents who would be applying for this assistance. So from those comments, staff basically created a sample application with questions that would be relevant for us to ask of anyone who is looking for the assistance. And originally, we wanted to use the area median income as a requirement for how we would approve applications for individuals needing assistance. And the board members from the community foundation suggested that instead of doing that, we use the HUD standards, which look at, which is what the Marin Housing Authority uses. And those standards basically define household size and income limits. And the town attorney also reviewed the sample application that we created and agreed that we should use the HUD standards. But she also had other comments that staff hadn't considered, like whether a resident would be disqualified from continuing to receive, to be able to use a Section 8 housing voucher if they received a grant from the town and things of that sort. So we made some updates. But from looking at the questions that the town attorney brought up, it seems like there would be more that staff would need to review in order to approve an applicant to receive a grant. So we did a little bit of research and we learned that the county had actually done something similar, where they approved money from their, I don't know if it came from their general fund, but basically the Board of Supervisors approved $650,000 to use for rental assistance. And there wasn't a lot of information as to how they were approving applicants. So from doing research, we found that there are actually five nonprofits that are screening all of the applications. These nonprofits actually have year-round programs where they help individuals with their assistance requests. And they, I contacted them to ask them, like, what kind of documentation they request. So they told me they asked for things like lease agreements, tax returns, employment letters to basically prove that they need assistance because they lost their employment due to COVID-19. If they had children in the household, they asked for school records or anything that would tie the applicant to the children that they're claiming live in the house that are minors and a whole bunch of other documentation. And so what the county actually does is after these nonprofits screen the applications and decide who is approved, then they contact the county and they have a list that they keep with the names of all of the applicants that have been approved, so that no one is receiving a second grant from the county from the same fund. And that would only happen if, let's say, somebody applied to receive assistance to two of the nonprofits. And let's say both of the nonprofits approved the application, then, you know, the county would make sure only, they only get one grant. So from looking at all of the information that's requested for approving a grant for rental assistance, staff kind of believes that it's a little more time-consuming to do the review process in comparison to the Business Relief Fund that we created and how we did that. But we kind of thought it would be good to provide some options for you to consider as to how we can continue to, continue the idea of helping residents who need housing assistance, but maybe going through it through a different, through a different way. So councilmember Casissa actually provided information as to other cities who are doing something similar. And so we, from looking at that, you can think about how you would want this managed. If we did have a fund that was established, we do have board members from the community foundation who would offer to review the applications. You should keep in mind that staff doesn't have any knowledge as to how to review the documentation and determine whether an applicant is qualified or not. And we should also take into consideration how we would do outreach for individuals who might need assistance for this. Let's say the elderly community, for example, probably doesn't have, let's just assume they don't have a computer or internet access. Maybe they don't get our newsletter. So we'd have to do outreach a different way than how we normally do it, which is electronically. So that's something that we would need to consider. And you should think about maybe the type of population that you want to target. From speaking to Planning Director Adam Wolf, he suggested that we ask that question, so that way you can decide if we want to target individuals in the low-income community or maybe individuals who are living in apartment complexes that are, and they're paying rent at market rate or different things like that. If we were to do something like this, we could also consider a lottery system, where after we review all of the applications and determine which ones are eligible for a grant, we can just do a lottery of some number and then determine how many people would get assistance from there. Like, let's just say we only have $75,000 and we have 200 applications, then maybe only 75 get selected. And a more fair way to do that would be through a lottery system. This is a similar process that the city of Alhambra in Southern California did for their grant opportunity. And then another idea would be just to And then another idea would be just to donate the money that we're requesting to an organization like EH Housing, which manages 79 units at the San Clemente Place. This is a organization that works on providing affordable housing. One thing you should consider for that, though, is that residents who are living in a facility like this, in a complex like the San Clemente Place already have an advantage on top of people who pay market rate because they're living in a place that provides them affordable housing and their staff is dedicated to basically finding programs that help the community living there in general. So those are some things that you should consider. And the request is for you to provide direction to staff as to how you would like to proceed if you did decide to approve the use of $50,000, matching the $25,000 donation from the community foundation to assist residents with housing.
Thank you so much, Lorena. Fantastic report. Are there questions from council members right now?
Yeah, David. Questions, one of Lorena. Saying that we're going to use HUD standards is kind of complicated because we're essentially saying we're going to use a ladder that ranges from extremely low to moderate. And that's, that's a huge range of income. So I'm not quite sure which HUD standard that you're, you're suggesting. And would that be on the low end? And I have a question for councilmember Casissa, if he's done some great work on looking at others. If he has a conclusion on what relevant other comparative jurisdictions might be doing in this.
So for the HUD standards, I think we could make the determination. I think there's different numbers that are looked at by the Marin Housing Authority regarding, for example, if you compare who they approve for Section Eight housing and then who they approve for the below-market-rate apartments or complexes that they offer people to apply for. So I think that would be for us to set depend, and it just depends on who you would like to target overall, whether it be the low-income community or people at higher levels. One thing to consider is maybe only approving households with, let's say, applicants with the household side of four or more, or maybe three or more, considering families are smaller. So that could be something to consider. So anyone with a household size that's smaller than that would be disqualified. It would, it would be for us to decide.
Yeah, David, this is Fred. There weren't a lot of programs or a lot of cities that I could find that were out there that were doing this type of program. I think the closest one was the city of Alhambra, which Lorena had reached out to and talked to them. They were, were, were one of the ones that was using a lottery-type program.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions from council members before we open it up to public comment?
Yeah, I have one. I think I mentioned before that staff may not be qualified if we go to review the applications. But can that be done in, but there are people from the community foundation that may be willing to take that piece on? Is that something overall that would be feasible? Because again, I think you guys are doing a great job on staff, especially in this area. Because I know this is one program that you had to create from nothing, I want to say. And I know you had help from Teresa with regards to the application. But I just want to make sure that we're not, I think it's a great program, it's just the, how we're going to execute it. And I just want to make sure that we're not overloading staff.
No, I only mention that so that the council could be aware that, I guess, the review process is going to be a little longer in comparison to the business grant funds, fund opportunities that we provided, but just so everyone's aware. So that way, if we do decide to do this and we do get assistance from board members from the community foundation, they would be able to assist us in learning how to review all of the documentation. That way, we are learning from people with experience.
Okay, and then it sounds like at this point in time, there's no set dollar amount, right? It would just depend on, it's kind of like a moving target type thing. In other words, businesses, I know they're easier to deal with, whereas flat, I think $1,000 per business. It sounds like this may be more dependent on the number of applications we received. Instead of us going like at this point in time, saying it would be 1,000 per household or something to that effect. And I'm just throwing out a number as an example.
Yeah, and that's something that we could decide for the businesses. We decided that it would be a $1,000 grant for, for the housing grant. We could either divide it by the number of approved applications that we have and then go from there. But if, let's say, we have $75,000 and we have over 200 applications, do we really want to divide that 75,000 by the number of applications? If the amount that they're going to receive is really small? Or do we just want to have a set amount and then use the lottery system that we would create to, to basically assign a certain amount to however many get approved through the lottery? It would be for us to decide as well.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. If I could just add in, Lorena, you could just see how complicated this is. You know, in my little mind, I thought this was going to be easy. The Corredamadera Community Foundation, you know, offered this $25,000 generous donation. And I'm like, let's go, we can do this in 10 days. And then the town attorney and Lorena kind of slowed me down with a councilmember Casissa. You know, it's very, it's a very, it's a, it's a difficult, the process is the most important thing. I think we, I think we're close and we definitely wanted you to know, you know, there's a lot of thought that we need to put into this. But what I recommend maybe for consideration, I think, you know, as the vice mayor said, if we're going to use a standard, we think the HUD standard makes sense, but which one do we use? I think that's, that's, that's one issue. I think staff can do it internally, but we need the assistance of the foundation. We have some really good, skilled, knowledgeable board members on the foundation that can help us. And I would also recommend that councilmember Casissa help us. He's been with us from day one on this. And then just making sure that whatever we do, the town attorney agrees on the process. So if you do a lottery, how much money are we going to give in grants? All those questions, we're just bouncing it off, making sure we're in the right with the town attorney. And then we can go forward. And so really, I think staff, if you're comfortable with what you've heard, unless you want to give direct, really direct instruction with us on a process that you, we're asking you that you actually allow this budget to go through and allow us with the team to put together the process as quickly as possible and start to distribute monies.
That's a much more manageable ask. Okay, awesome. Okay, do we have any further questions from council members before we turn this over to the public? No? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Any members of the public, please put your hand up via Zoom. Might be Daria, there we go. Sorry about that. Any members of the public who would like to comment, please put your hand up through Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, do we have any email comments on this item?
We have not received any email public comments on this item.
Okay, and nobody's got their hand up. So we'll go ahead and close public comment, but if you see an email come in, let me know and we can go ahead and reopen it so you can read it. How's that sound? Great, okay, thank you. So we'll bring this back to the council for council member comments now. Staff is asking for direction on whether or not, basically to, to allocate 50 grand in order to help low-income residents who are struggling, you know, making ends meet due to COVID-19. And bear in mind that this is coming on top of a really generous $25,000 donation being made by the Corredamadera Community Foundation. Charles.
Thank you, Mayor. So to me, this is an emergency ordinance once again. So I think triage, you know, we're, we're doing safety, we're trying to do, deal with vulnerability and, and help the, the people that ultimately cannot help themselves. So I object to the idea of a lottery. I think the rating system really should look at those very specific needs at an emergency situation and rank them in some way. And then ultimately, whoever ranks the highest is first in line for that, right? So like triage, if a patient comes in and this one, it's just not going to do that much, but this one, and you're going to save a life, you choose the one that saves the life, right? And that's the program we're doing. This is not a government program that's going to go on forever. This is a very immediate need program, and so therefore I would personally rather see something like that. It's still very fair because there's strict guidelines about how it would be ranked and viewed. But it's, it's need-based instead of, you know, open, which in a long-term program, I would say is the more appropriate tact. That's my personal thing. Then you talked about where you might find those populations. You know, I know with the elderly, the PG&E list, and I know Corredamadera in particular keeps an even more robust list and has already reached out to a lot of the more vulnerable populations. I would also say the schools. And, you know, they're instituting the lunch programs and stuff over the summer to help these disadvantaged families that I would reach out to the school district. And then, you know, other, other lists of vulnerable that maybe the county and, and that type of thing carry. So I think that that's part of it. The other thing is, is the burden on staff. I do not like to burden staff. I think that they're already overworked and I appreciate everything that you do. We're about to talk about interns. And I think that that's a, one really good use proposition. You know, because I think that it's, it's rewarding for them and it's, it's a great program to understand and they can have great impact in it. So something like that to consider therefore, you know, that way, because, you know, the, the, the use of an intern and the, the monies that, that you're saving, you know, is applied to really good things that benefit the community. It's not usury. So, you know, I guess those, those are my comments that I would say about this. But I can definitely make the findings and I'm happy to give it. And I just think we're blessed as a town to be able to do these special programs in ways that not everyone is.
Thanks, Charles. I, I think that's very interesting. Lorena, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that what I meant for the notification wasn't that we didn't have the information. It was just, what I meant was that it would take longer for us to wait to mail a letter and then wait for people to apply. And I just wanted council to be aware of that, that it won't be like a quick turnaround if we're going to be sending out letters and then waiting for people to have the opportunity to apply. So I just wanted to make that.
And then I guess that begs the question, I think that there was a temporary moratorium on eviction. So if, if we're coming out of that, is that, is there a timeline that could set when we could basically understand why this rollout would be more effective at the end of that, right, for the longer?
Yeah. I will look into what that is.
Great, okay, thank you, David.
Could I ask Charles and Lorena, if, if friendly amendment to your idea of a triage or a quality-based valuation would be that it would be the HUD-defined low-income and below who would be qualified? So there's a line that's drawn and it narrows the range of candidates who could apply and then make the case that they have a particular urgent need and that wouldn't be, I say, a chronic need, but a present urgent need. But nobody with moderate income would expect to, to qualify. Just those most needy essentially. But they, look at the list, I mean, it begins with a single-person household, it's 97.5 at low. Two-person household, 111. So what's, we're not talking about a, the, the people who actually get HUD Section Eight are either extremely low or very low. So this does serve some, this one, this, this standard, this cutoff would serve some of the forgotten middle.
So, yeah, guys, I'll just say, I, I totally agree with what Charles said, that this is an emergency response to an emergency situation. And I think our number one priority is to take this money, get it out the door and into people's hands as fast as possible. So I am all for letting staff, you know, take this and do whatever they see fit in order to get relief to our residents as quickly as possible. With that said, would anybody else like to comment? Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I'm on the board of the community foundation and we started this and we just, I would share your comments exactly. Like, we want to get the money into people's hands as quickly as possible. And I am totally comfortable giving staff, you know, the ability to do it in any way they see fit that makes it as easy for them as possible and as quick as possible. So we get the money into people's hands, people's hands who need it. I think that's really critical and I know that's what the community foundation wants to do. And if that means working with the EH and handing it off to them, all for it. Let's just do this and get it done as quickly as we can and help people out. Thanks.
Great. Fred, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I would agree with the last two minutes, two comments. And I personally, I would leave the lottery as an option. Because like Lorena said, we could get to it, it's easier to say you can triage and you can go down this and rank. When you have people and they're all grouped together, you can't go down and rank people individually because there, it's, it's more of a group-type thing. So I would just be, I would leave it up to staff on how to execute this. And I think Todd said it where he, he has a staff that can do that along with the community foundation. And I appreciate, appreciate them chipping in the money and I have total confidence in staff.
You?
Great. All right, great. Does staff feel like they have clear direction?
Yes.
Awesome. And I just want to say, I just noticed that Suzy Beatty's hand is up. So I think I would like to reopen public comment real fast and just see if she had anything she wanted to add since she did not get a chance to put her hand up when we were originally doing public comment. So we're going to reopen public comment and let Suzy Beatty talk here.
Hi.
Hey, Suzy.
No, I'm on the foundation too. And, oh gosh, who'd have thought it was so hard to give money away? This is a tremendous amount of work for you guys to do this. I just want to say that I, personally, I really like what Charles was saying. I think going along with the, the triage, you know, there may be people that are borderline on the finances. They may not be in the poverty level, but they might have a very, very urgent need. And that's where human judgment comes into factor. And I really think that our intent anyway on the foundation was that, I mean, Joni Vaughn and I were saying, I mean, before we even thought that the city or the town was going to participate, Joni and I were talking about contacting churches, contacting schools, finding out who needs and get that money to them. Now, I realize there are legal issues that probably, you know, have to be addressed. And I realize that's where a lot of the complications are. And anyway, that's all. I just, if we can do this and we can do it quickly, but really be fair and be quick, but be human about it. We don't have to look at every little nook and cranny and too much red tape. I'd love to see this happen if it can. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much, Suzy. Okay, we're going to close public comment. Todd, did you want to say something?
Sounds like Suzy's on our board. Suzy, thanks for volunteering to help us.
Yes, and I guess in light of Suzy's comments, I'll also just add, I know you guys are doing this anyway, but, you know, let's cheer on staff as they continue to work with the community foundation to ascertain, you know, what their intent is for their generous donation that they're making of their money and time. Awesome, okay, I think we're all set on this item then. Yeah, thank you very much. All right, that takes care of six B. Moving on to six C. This item is to authorize the town manager or a delegee to enter into a contract for the town park restroom interior repairs for an amount not to exceed $25,000. Is there a report? Oh, you know what, guys, I'm sorry, before we get into this, I just want to ask you, we've been going for more than three hours now. Does anybody want to take a five-minute break or do we want to just power through? Power through? Okay, here we go, let's do it.
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, thank you for having me. Here to talk about some modest improvements, the town park restroom. This is the one permanent restroom we have next to the tennis courts. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. I have just a couple of slides. It won't take very long. And see if I can execute this here. Okay. Okay, everyone see that? Great. So here's the location, as mentioned. This is our circa 1980 constructed facility, restroom facility. It's right next to, you know, Pixley and the tennis courts. It serves both the men's and women's restroom. It's been many years since it's had a significant update. I'm reluctant to call it a remodel renovation. This is really just kind of trying to make the space more inviting, make it more sustainable, just make it more welcoming and also install some features that will improve the ability to keep it clean on a regular basis. I've been talking to our maintenance staff and some of the, the ones that have been here longer have said, you know, during the warm months, they get, they get complaints every week, you know, basically from, you know, spring to fall. And, you know, I know there's And, um, you know, I know there's, there's some other ideas about, you know, different types of restroom facilities in various spots at town park. And, um, you know, definitely that's something that'll continue in the dialogue. But for right now, we just thought, hey, what can we do now? Buy us some time, upgrade the facility and, and we've found some ideas for, you know, not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars. So here's, um, kind of a plan view of the two facilities. As you can see, you know, we're, we're proposing to add some hand dryers, which, you know, obviously reduces the need for paper. And also is just a more sustainable feature, less touch points and all that. So they're automatically censored, you know, in, in response to, you know, COVID and all that. The areas shown in red are baby changing stations that currently aren't there. So obviously right there, those are two new features that we're highlighting. Want to add a little bit more LED lighting just to make the entry and, and overall space brighter and more welcoming. There are some additional lightings that are LED that'll get more of a enhanced look. So here, you know, we've graded out these new features and then otherwise we're just trying to take what's there and bring something that's, you know, a little bit more inviting and better feel. Right now, there's some older stainless models that just have a different vibe to it, something that you would feel if you were, you know, hard to, hard to put it in the right words, but definitely not something that, that's, that's gonna make you want to sit down and, and really, you know, just feel comfortable. So in addition, we've got some plumbing fixtures. They're all gonna be, you know, low flow, sustainable, meet the, the Calgary requirements of all that. And then just some basic needs to fix and repair the partitions in the women's side that were installed not too long ago. And then the men's side, they were pretty old and just needed a complete redo. So really, a pretty simple update and just something to buy us some time to have a more broad discussion about the overall needs for these types of facilities in town park.
Great. Thank you, RJ. Are there any questions from council members? Yeah, Charles?
RJ, are those LED lights on light sensors currently?
I don't believe so. I believe they're timer.
Timer set by us, so they're just on for the duration. Could we look at how, how easy it'd be to put it on motion sensor? You know, I think that that, that would be a nice upgrade as well, very cheap. Is it mechanically ventilated?
So it's actually, uh, there's a, oh, there's a wall above that is air ventilated. It's open air.
But are there fans or is there any filter system or any, like, you know?
No, it's, it's basically open air.
Right. So, so one of the things that, you know, so study for the well exam and we're looking at different ways to kind of make these safer environments. You know, given the current conditions, air movement is always a big one, especially in the restroom. So if there's just mechanical fans that could help move air exchange through there, I think that that would go a long way without having to heat or cool it, but just kind of create more flow. If it can get under the budget, that'd be really nice.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Charles. Any other questions from council members? If not, we're gonna turn this over to public comment. Any members of the public, please raise your hand through Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org if you'd like to comment on this item. Rebecca, have we received any email comments on this item so far?
No email public comments so far.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I am not seeing any public comment from the attendees online. Nobody's put their hands up. I'll keep an eye on that, but we're gonna close public comment for now and bring it back to the council for council comments. Are there any comments from council members for staff on this item? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, just one quick, first of all, thanks JR or RJ. I keep calling you JR, I think because of the U's. But I appreciate all your hard work. This is like the third, I think, park and rec project that you guys have going on. The dog park, I walked past there the other day. I know the fence is already up. So thank you for all that. Just one suggestion is, I don't know if there's any consideration to putting any kind of signage on, I want to say where the dog park is on that side of the park, saying that there's restrooms on the other side of the park. Cause this way at least it directs people over to that side, some kind of directional sign. That's the only I wanted to throw out there.
Fred, you may know better than I do, but I think seasonally, there will be a temporary portable restroom closer to the basketball courts. But certainly open to any signage that you think will improve the wayfinding.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Thanks, Fred. Any other council comments? This is an item looking for, is there gonna be a vote on this or is this just direction?
I think it's a vote.
Okay. Okay, awesome. All right. Are there any other comments? And if not, I will take a motion, I guess, to authorize the town manager or his delegate to enter into a contract for the town park restroom renovations in an amount not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars. All right.
Second.
Great. Rebecca, when you're ready?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Great. That was item six C. Moving on, six D is consideration and possible action regarding proposal to hire part-time temporary student interns for eighteen to twenty five dollars per hour and provide direction to staff regarding the creation of a new position classification for these interns. All right, is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. You want to take this one, RJ?
If you want to intro and I can drive home the details or either one.
Okay, how about questions? I feel left out. I haven't done a staff report tonight. My staff is killing it. So just that, this was RJ's idea. We have an open and lower level engineering position. And as you know, our projects have not slowed down. They've actually sped up. But just in, in light of the recent, you know, fiscal crisis that we all face, RJ came up with this concept. And it's to basically allow us to hire interns and to develop a pay range, a pay scale range. And so this is a two meeting process. The justification for it is in the background and discussion points of the staff report. We had our human resources director, Janet, evaluate this. And she, this is the recommended range for this type of position based on salary surveys in the area. And again, we think this could be a, really a utility type of position as the vice mayor brought up. Could handle a variety of things for us as we move forward on a lower level basis. And so with that, RJ is available to answer any questions. There's no action for you to take at this time. It's basically to just get some basic direction, answer any questions and we'll come back to you at the next meeting for approval.
Thank you very much, RJ. Did you want to add anything or is that pretty much it?
I just want to say that, yeah, you know, we definitely could use the support in public works. And, you know, otherwise you might have to lean more on, you know, more expensive professional services. So, you know, there's, there's definitely a cost benefit. And then we also have the ability to provide experience for an individual. And then also in return, you know, get that in-house support, which is much needed. And so I think it's a win-win. And we've got plenty of work for whoever we can find. And I think, you know, being a tough market in Marin and the cost of, you know, commuting here and, and living here is, is challenging. And so I really think just, you know, having that kind of basic pay really helps make that possible. And also, you know, hopefully improves the quality of the candidate pool.
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any questions from council members? Yeah, Fred?
I'm on a roll. RJ, I think it's a great program. One thing I noticed though is this, what we're looking at is just for DPW, right? Just to hire one intern? Or is this a program that, maybe it's more of a Todd question. Is this a program that's going to be department wide in the sense that if Park and Rec wants to hire an intern, they can go out and get one? So again, I'm looking at, is this a policy type thing? Or is it more like one off that we're gonna have to prove again, if Park and Rec a month from now says, hey, we want to do the same type thing?
It, it opens the door. It opens the door for it, but we would have to come back to you. Because again, this is, this has dollars and cents attached to it. And so we're, we're gonna see how this works and, and develop it. And then yes, we do see ourselves coming back to you probably mid-year, you know, and having a broad scope. You know, again, this is an engineering position. So if we hired someone in Park and Rec, it might be, it could be potentially be a lower pay scale as well. You know, the, the pay ranges could, could vary depending on what we're doing. But this opens the door for that.
Okay. And I assume when you say students, it's, it's high school, college?
I think we're looking at college in Marin, right? It's something like that, yeah.
I think typically, and I've had a number of engineering interns and we're looking for someone who's got preferably three years of college experience. You know, obviously we'll, we'll evaluate the candidate pool, but that's really where we're gonna get the, the most, the best balance of someone who can help us. And then also is ready to get experience on, for themselves on the professional side.
And we, we also have, we've used interns in the past and we'll continue to do that at the high school level. And so we do that now. And it's just, it's a situational thing. We do it a lot of times over the summer. So they can help Lorena and Rebecca on projects as we go. And so we'll continue to do that as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Charles?
So a question for RJ. So, you know, I'm familiar with a lot of intern programs. The architecture field does it a lot. There's a lot of different like references to interns. So there's full-time employed interns, there's summer interns. There's special relationship interns from universities. So schools like Cal Poly will actually have, provide engineering or architecture interns for a semester during school. And it's actually, they get credit for the university. So I think I'd like to understand a little bit more about how we're structuring. Is it just summer? If it's long, like longer term, are we gonna take one each semester from a institution or, you know? And then the other thing is, is, is it, are you also thinking about a development program for the interns? And not just using them as a resource for work and gave, giving them experience? But, um, you know, I guess I could save this for the comment period. But, you know, I did the intern development program for fifteen interns when I was at a large firm. And SFO has sixty of them, right? And part of it is, is that they're working for, you know, less wage. They're young, they want experience. They, if you develop a program and ultimately use them for research and other really great ways to improve and come with new thought, I think that I can support it a lot more, right? Like, and that's really what interns are for. I don't think of them as cost savings as much as experience gaining, new knowledge. And then ultimately it's a recruiting tool really. And I think that that's a really great thing is that you can kind of build those relationships in a, in a short term, see if it works for them, see if it works for you. And then hopefully they come back and provide long-term, you know, work for you. So just when we do this, I needed to say that because I'm okay if we go under those premise, but, you know.
Maybe, maybe more of a comment than a question?
Well, no, it's just, the question was, RJ, have you thought about that?
No, I, I'd love to respond to that because I, I believe I have a great answer. So Chris Good, if you've had the opportunity to meet him, he's a senior civil engineer working for the town of Corder Madara. He was an intern for me at the county seven, eight years ago. And so, you know, we brought him up through the ranks and he's done a fabulous job. And so, yeah, you know, the, really, it's, it's not here to, you know, take advantage of inexpensive labor. It's really to try to find those candidates that, you know, what, once, you know, I don't know how all fields are, but a lot of engineers, once they find that, that, that first job, they, they find themselves relatively happy and stuck it. And then it's hard to convince them to, you know, shift over. And so this is our opportunity to get someone with a lot of, you know, technical, you know, a lot of great skills, you know, very cutting edge technology forward, all those things. And then integrate them into the things that we need. And then, you know, there's that, like you said, there's that, that great balance where they're bringing something new that maybe we aren't using. And at the same time, they're gaining the institutional knowledge and the experience. And then over time, it could develop into something really great.
All right. Thank you, Charles. Great question. RJ, great answer. Any other questions for RJ? I'll just ask real fast, is it possible or legal to favor Corder Madara residents for these positions?
I, I don't believe that's legal.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, we, we wouldn't ask their ability to get here or their proximity to work. And then answering one other question about duration, all that. And so this, you know, this is an hourly position. We understand these are individuals in school with other constraints. And so there's flexibility. You know, it, it's not a, you know, there's a negotiation. It's, hey, if, if you can only commit to thirty hours and that's the best situation for both of us, then that's so be it. And you go back to school in August. But maybe you're interested in coming back and spending a week or two on one of your semester breaks. You know, all those things are just part of the dialogue and there's no set, you know, start, stop time. And again, it's just hourly. So that allows that flexibility.
Great. Thank you, RJ. Any other questions? Just want to let everyone know, my headphones died. So that's how long we've been at this. Okay. If there's no other questions for RJ, I'm gonna turn this over for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any members of the public with their hands up. I'd invite them to do so if they do want to comment. Rebecca, have we received any emails?
We've not received any emails.
Okay, great. Then seeing no public comment, we're gonna bring it back to council for council comments and/or direction to staff. Are there any comments that anyone would like to make? I think we're all in support of this, is what it sounds like.
Little idea.
Okay, great. Okay, RJ, you feel you have direction? Awesome. Okay, great. Thank you.
Eli, I'm sorry, really quick. I think if we go past nine thirty, I think we need a motion to extend it.
I'm hoping it doesn't come to that, but we'll see.
Unless we can finish in six minutes.
Let's see if we can. All right, six E, verbal report from the town manager. Todd, take it away. Oh, you're muted.
And I'm done. I'll keep it quick. So we've had a lot of good community discussions, starting on June second and as well as this, today, this morning with the mayor and I and our staff on the community calls. We've had a lot of conversations, good conversations and questions about what's going on today. And so I just really refer the council or any community members to those community chats. The, the core of those conversations, the last two, two meetings have been like the first twenty to thirty minutes. And so I'll just let those words stand on their face because I think they're outstanding community dialogue. And I really appreciate our community members' support and thoughtful comments. I also just want to just recognize that our community has had a number of marches and protests in our area, in the central Marin area. And again, I just want to acknowledge how proud we are of our, our residents of, you know, abiding by the law, being respectful, but making sure that their voice is heard. And this is a moment of change. And, and I think everyone in this community is seizing the opportunity. And so I just want to acknowledge that and I, I really appreciate that. On the recent, and again, schedule wise, what's coming next? And so we continue to engage our community on these Tuesday calls. We think that is the right form. It feels right. The mayor can speak for that as well, but it just feels right. And so we're gonna continue to do that and really push people to our previous calls and then engage them as we move forward. The police chief, it's on our website. We posted it on all of our social media forums last night. Thank you, Rebecca. The police chief is gonna hold a similar type of community talk on Thursday at nine o'clock. Again, that's on the very front page of our website. So if anyone goes to that, you can get the information. And then we're trying to put together a police council meeting. Again, the police council is the governing body of Central Marin Police Authority. It consists of two council members from each jurisdiction, San Antonio, Loxton and Corder Madara. And what we're gonna try to do is we're gonna invite all of the other remaining nine council members in the three jurisdictions. And we want to have a meeting and we want to start the first of many meetings to basically start a, a, a public conversation about our police force and to cover everything, all, all, all facets. Cause it's one thing to say, you don't support the police department or you do support the police department. It's important that you have a factual basis to how we got here. You know, this is a conversation not only about police tactics and procedures and policies and training, but it's about, it's about who we are. It's about our culture and it's not developed over one year. It's thoughtful and this goes over decades of time. And so I'm excited for those to start. Please, if you're a community member, look out for that date. It'll be one of the last Thursdays, I think, of this month. And again, it'll be the first of many conversations. And from that conversation, I think then we'll start to move forward as a, as a group. that conversation, I think then we'll start to move forward as a as a group to any change, if we if we notice shortcomings and it'll be obvious, we'll make change as we need to go and so I'm looking forward to that as well. Just really quick on the the county order, again we talked about that a lot, we discussed it on our agenda items today, the next one coming our way is going to be June 12th, it looks like it's very, very likely and the work has been done, it's just waiting for the signature of the county health official, Dr. Willis, but we're going to allow, it looks like indoor retail for non-essential businesses, so that's coming our way, we have the practices in place. And then lastly, I'm sorry, I'm just going to turn it over, I have two minutes, I'm going to turn it over to Adam.
Take all the time you need.
Okay, Adam's got an update, okay, if I do, I just I feel, sorry, there's a lot going on, Chief Shirts, as we talked about at our last meeting in the in the fire council meeting, he's retiring, he was going to be June 30th, he's actually leaving this Friday, so this Friday is going to be his last day, so if any of you are around the firehouse or you have time to send him a message, I know he'd really appreciate it, we think the world of him and he's just done so much for our community and the service over the last 20-plus years, so I'm going to miss him and as you know, Ruben Martin is going to be our new acting fire chief as we move forward and we'll start a lot of discussions at the administrative level within our fire department and those neighboring us have any opportunities to move forward and to improve our service delivery and then just lastly, I want to give a shout out because as you, we go through all these crises that we've been facing and they're not going away, fire season is upon us and I just again, I some statistics were given to us and I want to just tell you, we've talked a lot about our evacuation routes in the Wui area, the urban, the wildlife urban interface and Marla Orth and the team has cleared 98.5% of those evacuation routes over the last year, so we're almost completely, we've completely met our mark and the other important one is we've I believe removed over 16,000, let's see, what is it?
As long as you're looking for that, I'll entertain a quick motion to extend this meeting for half an hour until 10 o'clock.
Second.
Okay, I didn't actually make the motion, but.
I'll make the motion.
Beautiful.
Second.
Fantastic, okay Rebecca, vote please.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ovazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yeah.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you, back to you Todd.
And I'm sorry, so and we'll again have Marla come out and give you some numbers and stuff, but we've, she's removed over 16,000 chipped cubic yards of flammable fuels up in our hillsides, it's a remarkable number, it's just a start, but I just the effort going forward and as you talk about measure C, we now have a funding stream of about just under 400,000 annually to keep doing this through the measure C, the county tax that was passed, but it also, it doesn't supplant what we've been doing, it's being added to the work that we're doing and so we're going to continue doing the work of the chipper programs and everything Marla's doing going into this year because we can't slow down, we need to keep going and so that's moving forward and I just want to give a shout out to Marla and the team on that and then also kind of on the outdoor dining conversation, I wanted to push just my last update, I'm going to give it to Adam and ask him to give you a quick update on Menke Park and some things we're working on out there.
Thanks a lot Todd, I appreciate that, I'll I'll be very quick, but this is something I just don't want to surprise you with as you see some changes around Menke Park, hopefully by next week, this is something that frankly I think is sort of a tandem project along with what we talked about with outdoor dining around Old Corder Madara Square and basically what we're looking at is adding just some movable tables and chairs, this is something that I think council member Lee also touched upon when we were talking about public right-of-way, if this is town-owned property, this would be something that town would be doing and we're looking at basically taking some of the parking spaces which as you can see are not heavily used, again this is today at about 3:30 and converting them into seating areas and really trying to frankly enliven that area, it's intended to be a to-go dining area, so if you go to any local restaurants, people can bring their meals and and sit down at the tables and chairs, so we're looking at two different areas, this is one here, outdoor area B, there's some parking spaces under this tree that are shaded but people in any case that would be another one and then sort of right around the right around and these aren't fixed, so you'll see in a second, but right around the gazebo there and let's see, so just more, they're going to be outfitted with handwashing and sanitary stations, self-service, they're going to have some safety barriers to make sure that obviously it's protected and safe for people, here's the other other area here as well, working with RJ Sukho, who thanks, thank you very much for providing, you know you sort of sketch this out and this this is again how we're working together to do these sorts of projects and again, this is going to be fluid in terms of how we roll this out and what it looks like, but this is really the area that we're looking at right now, these are the tables and chairs, they actually are sort of that park plaza sort of type of tables and chairs movable, these came in actually today and so we're going to try as soon as next week with the help of Julie Kritzberger from the chamber to actually roll this out and again provide another opportunity for sort of a to-go dining option in this area of town and frankly it could be just for, it's not going to be reserved strictly for those people, but I think it will bring people potentially to this area that would otherwise not think of this as an area to patron patronize and and so anyways, it's it's an idea of you know Todd always asks us to be a little bit creative and think about how we can maybe push some ideas forward and so this is something we want to roll out next week and you know I will make sure that we do the necessary outreach to the local businesses in that area, but we've heard nothing but positive reviews at this point, but we'll continue to do so.
Thank you so much Adam, thank you Todd, anything else from you guys?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, awesome, that brings us to council reports, my reports are not urgent and we have a meeting a week from today, so in the in the interest of time, I'm going to defer my reports until next Tuesday's meeting, does anybody have any reports that they want to make tonight?
I'll defer mine also.
Okay.
Just one, we had a really terrific meeting of the disaster preparedness council and the highlight was Todd Landau holding forth on the wrapping up of Fire Safe Marin's first decade and his retirement as executive director out of it in order to join our Central Marin Fire Agency, one of the things that's coming up is that a timely topics training that could be relevant to a lot of folks in Corder Madara will occur in the evening of June 17th at 7:00 PM, look at Fire Safe Marin for that actual details, June 17th, 7:00 PM, that's the only reason why I'm making that report right now.
Thanks for letting everyone know, if there are no other reports, that is going to bring us to our last agenda item, which is the review of the draft agenda for the June 16th meeting, does anybody have any questions or comments on that agenda? If not, we are adjourned, let's get out of here.